Thank you, everybody, for attending the City for Commons Planning Commission meeting this evening. First off, tonight, we will review meeting minutes from February, and we have a couple of planned conveyance instruments to look at before we start out in discussion of the zoning. With that, everyone will take a look at the meeting minutes for prep work. Jerry, know if you have any comments. We have a motion in a second. All in here, say aye.
Aye.
So, word. Next up on our agenda this evening is Atlanta Dance at 76 Tower Hill Road. I'll approve it with our good Kevin.
I'll jump in. So, this was actually before us a couple of years ago, and there was a mistake on the owner's part. He didn't record it. So, the reason this portion is back, the, there was actually the lot nine between the two lots, 74 and 76 was, but this portion was not. So, they're just kind of coming up and coming back and cleaning this up. There's new ownership, and literally, it's something that we already looked at, but they're cleaning up this piece, this small piece, and transferring. From 112 parcel, the address of 112 Tower Hill to 76, it's a small, very small piece.
The way the flats were changing, we're changing the flag lot to a lot that's not a flag lot. Correct. The little lambs' hooks are on the two right angles of the.
They, they, it's actually being transferred, it's not, it's not its own parcel. It's, it's part of 112, and it's being transferred to 76. So, it's not, it's not, it's standalone lot.
Okay, that's what I meant. This used to be, 76 used to be a flag lot, and basically, we related it to the top.
No, the road's at the top.
Oh, okay, well, the flags, but the whole flag portion, though.
Yeah, it looks like a flag, but it's reversed. It was just the way it was done. So, no, it's not really a.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I'll move to approve the application for the transfer for, I guess it's 112 Tower Hill Road. How can you submit it?
Second. We have a motion in a second. All in here, say aye.
Aye.
So, word. Approve the conveyance for 76 Tower Hill Road. Next up is a re-subdivision of a lot at 191 Miami Parkway.
So, this is a rather large lot, and if I could, just to remind you all, turn on your mics, so, just so everybody can hear. But there's a rather large lot at the end of Miami Parkway that really had minimal access to it. Despite it being a lot of road frontage along Tower Hill Road, there's a deep ravine adjacent to Tower Hill Road. They did come before council to obtain an easement through city property at the very bottom, or I should say, very, at the very top of the page. You can see just under the heading, there's a small dotted line there. That's an easement, both off of Tower Hill and Mary Ingles Highway, that they obtained from council, to access the lot. They, despite it having a lot of road frontage along Tower Hill, that's going to be the access point. But they're just literally splitting it up into two lots. The intention is to perhaps build a single house on the bottom portion, and they created a couple easements. There are, were some existing easements through there, but they created an additional easement for water access off of Miami to reach that lot.
Does KYTC have any control over the access point on Mary Ingles at this point?
They do, and they, at this point, that's why we put a little flag over to Tower Hill Road or granted that, because that actual access point has always been there for access for SD1 to Mary Ingles Highway. So, SD1 has an easement to go back in to service their sewer lines along Tower Hill Road, and however, at the most recent discussion with the state, they weren't going to grant that easement because the road was closed down there. But they are in the process of reopening that road, and it's due to be opened in late June, and at that point, it, it's kind of always been there, and I don't know why they wouldn't grant, allow them to access that. And if they don't, there is the opportunity to come over to Tower Hill Road, is why we, we put that one down.
You know, you mentioned about the easement for SD1 to get into the sewer there along Tower Hill. Is there, is there not an easement on Lot B?
I don't know that there was a, I don't know that it was a formal easement. I guess I should say, it was, that's where they accessed it. You can tell there was a drive, there was always a driveway there that accessed it. So, I don't know if there was ever a formal easement, or if it was just, that's where they accessed it. Always accessed. So, I'll be honest, I don't know if there's a formalized easement associated with that. And even how far it goes, how far it goes back there. It might just be for them to physically get up over, over, I really don't, unfortunately.
Yeah, I mean, I'm pretty familiar with that sewer that runs down to there. I just, I don't think that there's an easement on Lot B that's not shown. I don't know that we care about it, but.
I mean, we can make, bring it to the intention of the surveyor and see if there is something there to.
Yeah, 'cause I, I just, I know that the manhole is down at the bottom down there. They've had all kinds of issues with that thing, overflow and.
Right.
Having a lot of issues there with it, because there's a combined overflow with the river there, too. I mean, I don't think it would necessarily affect their ability to construct a house on the property. I don't know how, you know, from the city standpoint, we want to just make sure that all this utility. I mean, we could, I guess, it's one of those things we could base a condition upon adding any, you know, any applicable utility. Probably all of Lot B is subject to hillside development controls, isn't it?
If it not, I mean, if it's a single, single home, you know, obviously, geotechnical for anything, you know, associated with the build of the house, but beyond that, not really any, you know, tree preservation or anything like that for some of the lot.
I just can't think of any flat areas on that.
It meanders. There's, there's not much, and I think that there is a spot kind of that you can get up to that's most conducive. You can almost tell where a house, you know, would be appropriate if one didn't.
I guess in terms of the access on Mary Ingles, again, do we know when that'll be publicly reopened?
I mean, I was told that it'll be complete in late June. That's the projected schedule, but as far as official, I don't know.
I guess, like you said, there's a connection to Tower Hill. I'm just, I guess we gave them access to Mary Ingles, and Mary Ingles doesn't reopen, for whatever reason.
Right. Yeah, and that's why we did the other standard, where they requested the other standard, just in case. It's not the best location. It'll work, you know, they can get through there. We put it kind of as close to that, as close as we could away from the intersection, but it will work.
Happy to move for approval of the subdivision, re-subdivision of Lot H of E.W. Cook, First Edition to Briar Cliff. Have to submit it.
Any condition for including any applicable utilities?
Dave, I'd like you to add to my motion as to what our condition should be.
I would just make the condition upon including any applicable, or any recorded utilities that's on Lot B to be included in the flat, or another flat.
I'd like to include that in my motion.
A second. We have a motion in a second. Is any other discussion? So, word. Next on the agenda is continued discussion of the zoning ordinance, Phase 3. This evening, we'll be talking about Article 3 of zoning, the zoning districts, a continuation of some discussion that we had in our planning commission meeting last evening. Without alternative, we'll see if you can solve.
Good evening, and thank you for having me break a night service to you. Tonight, we will quickly run through the zoning ordinance update process. I will give a quick summary of the comments that I heard during the coffee and conversations that took place in February. We will review four selected topics, four selected topics in the several zoning districts. Those will be the Alexander Pike and McHughes District, the Commercial Office District, the Traditional Business District, as well as the Central Business District from the town center in Midway. So, we'll be reviewing only the significant changes from Phase 2, or those topics that we identified in Phase 2 as needing more discussion, and we'll end with the next steps. If you don't get through all the sections tonight, we will continue the discussion at the planning commission meeting in April. We talked several times during this session. This evening, in preparation to answer questions, we'll begin from question number 1. The zoning ordinance update process is happening in roughly four stages. The first stage included an analysis of the existing conditions, as well as a thorough examination of both the existing subdivision and zoning ordinance sets. At the end of that phase, we produced a diagnostic report, which is on the city's website. In Phase 2, we created the new regulations, and major changes from where we're from the code were fleshed out. We completed Phase 2, September 2023. All of the Phase 2 drafts were compiled into a document, and that is available on the city's website. The Phase 2 draft shows how the updated regulations differ from the city's existing regulations. In Phase 3, we will complete all of the necessary amendments and align zoning that with the zoning districts, and we are currently in Phase 2, which we started in January. The Phase 3 document documents changes from the Phase 2 draft. And then Phase 4 includes adoption of the zoning ordinance ending. We will wrap up Phase 3 on April 17th. During the 17th session, we did permit to discuss any items that were unfinished during Phase 3. At this point, we didn't finish the signed regulations last month, so we'll review the signed regulations in April, and any items that were unfinished tonight. On Thursdays, after the planning commission meetings, we hold coffee and conversations at Fort Thomas Coffee from 10:00 to 11:45 a.m., and from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Please feel free to drop in anytime during those hours at the planning commission meeting the following month. I report out to the planning commission concerns and questions at community members expressed during coffee and conversation sessions. At the public sessions in February, we had approximately 12 community members that attended, and we discussed the development of the ordinance provisions for Midway Court. We also talked about all the references from the UDO regarding the community planning struck, and we had several items regarding the Central Business District discussed as well. Those will be discussed later in the presentation, so we'll talk about them more depth in. We talked about Section 110, which is the labor section, and we also talked about the historic overlay districts for towers. And please note that there will be no coffee and conversations in April. During Phase 2, we spent quite a bit of time discussing the physical differences between the northern and southern portions of the Alexander Pike. We discussed the differences to topography, as well as the nature of the street itself, and consequently, during those Phase 2 discussions, the consensus seemed to be that we needed to develop two subzoning districts for the Alexander Pike and McHughes District. Thus, we have created the Alexander Pike and McHughes District 1 and 2. What you see on the screen is the southern portion of the district, which is the Alexander Pike and McHughes 1, and it stretches from the southern cooperation boundaries northward to Austin Avenue. Alexander Pike and McHughes 2 will be the northern portion of the district, and it encompasses all the non-residential uses along the corridor from Woodville Elementary to I-471. The bifurcation of the district allows the development standards, the location parking requirements to be tailored to different areas for all these order. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
So, like we used to do when you were in the Armory, if you're not hearing me, just wave.
It was so kind of Kevin to say, turn on the mic, so like, which is you, but getting the mic, it's hard to be a call for the phone. Like, if the mic was there, and you wasn't there, it's hard to call him.
Yeah, does it, does it seem to be?
This is perfect, the way that you're looking at it.
In the Phase 3 draft of the UDO, the permitted uses are the same for both subzoning districts. If the planning commission wishes, the permitted uses could be differentiated by subzoning district if you wish. In the Phase 3 draft for both subzoning districts, office and retail uses are permitted by light, whereas light industrial uses are restricted uses, and vehicle and equipment uses are conditional. As we have been discussing uses, two uses have emerged that may or may not be appropriate in one or both the subzoning districts. The first is hotels. Currently, in the Phase 3 draft, hotels are not a permitted use in the Alexander Pike and McHughes District. For context, hotels are permitted as restricted use in the Neighborhood Commercial and Office District, and in several of the Central Business Subzoning Districts, including the Townsend Core and supporting, and then all three core subzoning districts in Midway. The other use that we haven't talked about are co-working spaces. And co-working spaces are facilities where individuals rent office space, and have associated a number of amenities for the people who rent office space, such as internet service and office equipment. They are set up in a number of different ways. In some situations, you just rent space, in other situations, you have to have membership, others. Some co-working spaces also have networking events and social events and those kinds of ways. In some ways, they're very typical of an office, and in other ways, they're much more intense, because you have a rotating clientele. So, the question, the first question before you is, should these permitted uses be permitted, these uses in terms of hotels and co-working spaces be permitted in one or both of the subzoning districts, and should they be permitted by rate?
We have the hotels as a permitted use in the neighborhood commercial, right?
It is a permitted use in the Neighborhood Commercial Office District, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. It is restricted use in the Neighborhood Commercial Office, and it's only restricted in terms of location. And so, the only place it would not be allowed in the Neighborhood Commercial Office, as it's currently drafted, would be that tiny little lot at Vivwack and South Fort Thomas. It would be the only place you would have hotel permitted in the Neighborhood Commercial Office for office reasons.
I think it makes sense where we have that interchange between 471 and 27, which I think is, is where it is permitted. I don't know that it really makes sense to have hotels anyplace else in town, just the traffic and everything else that goes along with it. But we provide a place for them to have hotels, if someone wants to put a hotel in, that really wouldn't affect any of our neighborhoods. So, I think it's fine the way it is.
So, you're saying, like, if Fort Thomas was flagged, it would be okay to have?
Yeah.
Okay, but not along Alexander Pike?
I wouldn't think so. That's just me.
And that's where it's currently drafted, but a council member raised this as an issue in one of the meetings, and so I'm bringing it to you now as to whether or not you want to permit it along the corridor.
Okay.
Where the, and I'm thinking where the depths is, or not depths anymore, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does seem like it would be appropriate places as well, if it's moving to do that. We probably just have to reserve until public conversation, then.
I don't think there's much space anywhere to do it. We'd be building in the hillside. There wouldn't be much.
Well, with the liquor barn is, that's a fairly flat site, but it's not a large site.
Right.
The other area I would think is there's that large, I won't say agricultural, but that large private lot behind the.
It used to be the dairy park.
Behind there. You could develop that into a hotel, I think, potentially, but I don't know that I would permit it by right, though.
So, if we made it a conditional use, is that?
You could make it as a conditional use in the Alexander Pike and McHughes 2, which would mean it would be this other portion of, what would be your condition? I mean, what's, what's the defining factor for it?
Jerry, what was your concern with putting there? Well, everyone, there's always consumer concern about traffic, and when you have a decent sized hotel, you have a lot of cars coming in and out, and that's fine at an interstate intersection. I don't think, you know, if you have to go by Woodville, or if you have to go into the Fort Thomas, it does, doesn't seem like a compatible type of use.
And that's, that's a benefit of having the two subzoning districts. I mean, we can easily say, what I've heard you say, is not, definitely not in the southern portion of the corridor, which is Alexander Pike and McHughes 1. So, that, I think y'all were all aligned on.
Right.
The question, it becomes, as you head toward I-471, would it be appropriate? And that basically starts at Woodville, and goes northward to the byway of I-471. And I think the only lot there would be just go through the liquor barn.
Or the property behind it.
Or the property behind it.
I live in one of the property behind it, because it goes up on that hill, and there's all those houses that go around there, and the bottom of Holiday and everything, way back on that hill.
That's zone 21.
Yeah, that would zone 21. It is 21 right now.
Okay.
So, it would have to be rezoned to Alexander Pike.
That'd be a bigger issue.
That's a bigger issue, and that would come in front of you.
Okay.
So, the only thing that's commercially zoned right now, is it's still in general commercial, is the liquor barn, and the beer formation, that used to be industrial, like 15 years ago or so. It was rezoned in general commercial, probably for the liquor barn. So, and no, no hotels along corridor at all?
I don't think so.
The little heaven on.
We provide a location, someone wants to put a hotel, we provide them a location. I don't know if we need to open up the whole corridor.
I mean, there's no reason for you to do that, meaning.
Agreed.
I mean, I can't think of an ideal lot, or an ideal structure, that could be converted or anything like that.
So, how about no?
How about a lot that marches on?
Well, that's true, which is currently access other portion.
Oh, yeah.
And that's a large lot.
Well, it is a fairly large lot, but it's surrounded by residential of all three sides.
Yeah, and the residential goes up the hill.
Right.
Around it, so.
They want visibility, too. You won't have, unless you're at the interchange, you're not going to have any of this building.
No. So, no, completely. Right. How about co-working?
Who would be in view? I mean, I'd be okay with it, generally, sounds like offices.
It is an office use, but it is a little more intense. I have used them a lot in the last couple of years, and, yeah, and so you can, the clientele is a little, and I saw in your memo, I said, you know, we're going to allow that, we probably will have a separate parking standard for it, because there's more people coming in and out throughout the day, because they'll rent for an hour, they'll rent for a couple of hours, or whatever else. But it does seem like a good use, a lot for some of those buildings, so, okay.
So, is that for both of the, the subzones?
Yes, so that's what I understood, is that okay?
Okay, yeah.
When we met with the city council back in February, we discussed residential over non-residential along Alexander Pike. As we discussed in February, all the first parcels on the southern end of the corridor, everything that is currently, and as we currently have it drafted, is not in the McHughes Pike and McHughes 1. Now, the southern portion is currently zoned either professional office or general commercial. And today, under your existing zoning ordinance, you're allowed to have residential over non-residential, with the only caveat being that it's a two to one ratio. So, today, you're allowed to have residential over non-residential with no density restrictions. As we started discussing the Dixie limit for this particular parcel back in February, it was a suggestion that perhaps we institute the R3 standards on this lot. Again, this is the back of the envelope kind of analysis, but we have imposed upon the R3 standards, which are 8,000 square feet for the first four dwelling units, and 4,000 square feet for the remaining units. And again, because this is back of the envelope, we haven't dealt with stormwater features, central locations, and handicap spaces. So, what that means is this is the most intense that this site could be dealt with, because we have not dealt with all of those things. As this is currently laid out, it has the R3 standards, three-story buildings, the number of required parking spaces. And this is every top government, and this is the current location of the office building in Safe Ship. With the R3 standards and all of those other standards, you would get 41 dwelling units on this site, and 32,500 square feet of non-residential uses. If you remember, without the R3 standards, 52 dwelling units would be permitted on this site. So, if I'm using the R3 standards, we're decreasing it by 11 dwelling units. You have one more to show you. If you decrease the height to two stories, and then increase the footprint of the building, you get 35 dwelling units and 44,000 square feet of non-residential, again, using your R3 standards. So, the question before you is, should you continue to permit residential over non-residential, because you do currently? If they are permitted, should it be in one or both subzoning districts? And should there be density limitations? And if yes, are those density limitations for the R3 appropriate?
So, a question on that parcel, or that group of parcels, do we know what the square footage is from our service today?
I don't.
But can you repeat that?
Frank will tell us in just a second.
So, the question is, is how much square footage is there today?
And Frank is going to calculate that for us.
I'm sorry, are you talking about the buildings that exist right now?
Two blocks.
Yes.
The one that was the former IGA, that's now an office building, and the former fresh that is now Safe Ship. And Frank can calculate that for us.
He's a math wizard.
You're an engineer, you got math.
Is this a use that you see much of nowadays? I can see it in the CBD and old buildings, absolutely, old buildings are, but does anyone build residential over non-residential?
Yes, especially.
Give me some examples of, like, new construction.
Here in town?
No, not, I mean, it seems odd to me. I wouldn't want it, you know, in the middle of a parking lot, like, yeah, on the side.
Well, have you noticed the buildings are actually up at the street now?
Yeah.
Because in Alexander Pike and McHughes 1, we don't allow parking in front of the buildings. Certainly, there are examples of it in Newport. I lived in one of them.
You're on the throw.
I'm sorry?
On the throw.
Yes, on the throw. And so, the answer is, right now, there's 54,500 square feet. I'm sorry, plus or minus, close enough we don't have to work.
Could you repeat that? I couldn't hear it.
54,500 square feet of retail on the site, or non-residential on the site right now.
So, it would be less.
So, it would actually be less non-residential.
Than existing.
Than existing.
I can see it in an urban setting, you know, it'd make sense in Newport, it just doesn't seem like Fort Thomas.
And it may not ever happen. What we're, what you're talking about here is continuing to allow what you allow today. And also, actually, where you do have it, is at the corner of Grand and Highland, you have commercial on the first floor and residential above in that building there, and two instances, one with a piece of place, and the other one right on the corner. right on the corner. Um, I'm talking.
You have it, you have it in, uh, in residence.
Yes.
In multiple buildings.
Multiple buildings there.
Yeah, I can see it in older buildings. I mean, Newport has them, I mean, lots of the new stuff they're doing there. But again, that's an urban kind of setting.
Like local station.
Yeah.
And it may never happen.
I, I mean, that could soon work.
Yeah.
Especially now.
I guess whether, whether it will or won't, I mean, do we want to restrict it? I guess I'm, I'm thinking, why restrict, you know, if that's allowed use now, do we, do we want to, and so there's some kind of restriction.
Yeah, I think you're not so proud of either.
Tim, in terms of we impose this new restriction on there, for existing owner of the property, I mean, are, are they bound by this as soon as we put this restriction on? Or, or are they somehow grandfathered in under the old restrictions?
No. No, if they, if, for example, if there was a building there today that had been built under the old standard, they would be grandfathered in. But if anyone builds after this is enacted, they have to follow these regulations.
Well, so, yeah, and I mean, obviously, we're not enacting today, but if we're talking about if the current builders, buildings there.
Yeah.
They did that, I think, for fine. Do you agree?
Right. I mean, if it existed today, they would just be non-conforming in terms of their structure. But for example, if the old Ajayi building was torn down, and this was put in its place, they would have to follow the new standards for density. That you put in, that are enacted as a result of this update.
Unless they get it done before it's enacted.
Unless they get it done before it's enacted, which I don't think can happen. We don't, having said that, I mean, they could potentially get a plan in front of you. But, yeah. And, and, and let's keep that in mind, right? I mean, if they get, if they get windows as, as soon as, if they have submitted the application, and it is deemed complete, before this is enacted, then they will have locked in the development rights that exist today.
So do we have a, today, today, do we have a restriction on the number of floors?
So you don't, like now, depending upon which district you are in, whether it's professional office or general commercial, there is a restriction on floors, but the height is fifty feet.
So there's no restriction on floors?
Uh, whether it's, uh, I think there is in general commercial. But in the professional office, which this is odd, the, today, your ordinance, the planning commission is given the opportunity to grant waiver to the maximum height in the professional office district. That is in your current ordinance now. And a good portion of this area is already, is currently zoned professional office. So in some situations, they could get much more than fifty feet today. If you grant a waiver.
General commercial is four stories.
So general commercial is four stories or fifty feet. Which means, but by the fact that it's an or, not an and, if their stories are more than this traditional, you know, it could be more than fifty feet. What the current draft Phase Three says, it's capped at fifty feet. So you are in that situation, low than high.
I guess I would think, I, I wouldn't want to put too many restrictions on it, but I've, I've, subjecting it to the R3 density restrictions, but allowing what they have now, just kind of my opinion.
I think two stories.
Um, do you want to?
I think that, I think that limits, you know, you can do on a commercial property. You can't make that.
Well, the second floor has to be apartments, isn't that correct?
It doesn't have to be.
Okay.
So that's the other thing you can do. Right now, your height is, is fifty feet. Whether you're putting office above it, or a commercial above it, or residential above it. You certainly could say, if it's residential over non-residential, that you're limited in height in terms of stories and/or, you could do that. In which case, you know, you could get taller buildings if it was an office space, and shorter buildings if it was residential. You can do that. Um, the only thing I would say to you is keep in mind that the more restrictions you put on a property, the less likely it's going to be redeveloped. And that's fine, if that's what you want to do. But I'm just telling you that that's the case. Like you could be living with frishes forever.
I guess, hearing that you could do four stories or fifty feet, I guess I would be maybe inclined to, to impose a fifty foot limit.
Which we've already done. That's in the Phase Three draft.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
You know, rather than, you know, the restriction on, on floors, so.
Forty feet.
Sorry. I just think it's too big.
We're showing this the IGA site, but this is for any place long, one and two mixed use.
And that's, that's one of the acts.
Even if it doesn't seem like the problem at IGA, I mean, in our locations, yeah.
So what I would say is, think about this, before we go right over him. Um, we've talked about this area being distinctly different, farther than you wanted to buy for KDA, but this is an area that's become a neighborhood and a place in and of itself. As you head further north into the Alexandria Pike which is two, basically, you're looking at auto-oriented suburban development. Um, because of the nature of the road and the nature of the site. So you might want to think about only doing this in the southern portion, in the mixed use one, um, as opposed to further. But the question before you is, what, do you want to leave it at fifty feet? Or do we want to lower the height, either in general or for all uses? Or for just residential uses? Sorry. There's a lot of questions.
From a practical standpoint, if you reduce it by, uh, from the fifty feet, I mean, it seems like we're putting in quite a few limitations on the ability to redevelop on, on, on many of these. I, I think my, my opinion would be to keep it at fifty feet.
Yes, one of my, so do we have any idea what the restriction is in Island Heights or in South Beach on the same corridor?
I do not know. Do you know, Frank?
I don't think so.
Frank can pull up IGA as a map if it works.
Because obviously, there's, you didn't say what you want to say on one side of the street, but at the other side of the street, it's a different context or a different regulation, then it's kind of like, what's the point?
Right. Well, keep in mind, what's across the street from this is obviously the cemetery. And then you get the highway, and then you move into another jurisdiction.
Well, I'm thinking that the southern portion more than necessarily in this, but.
In South Beach, and then again, I'm, I'm, I was, I was actually going to start, but South Beach has the, that law is right across the street.
Right.
So that is, or.
It's very tough.
Well, it's, it's, there are three floors of offices, plus then you got the Campbell Palace, and David Campbell. So it's four floors, really. But it's more than fifty feet, I'm pretty sure. Around, it's at least fifty feet, right? Even the apartments that are there, the office, those offices that are south of the YMCA, on the upper side of the Twenty-Six on the Hill, are those three floors or those two?
Two.
Actually, the basement and the floor.
Yeah.
The basement, yeah.
The approach and the, it's the one story.
It's not a slip side, so you don't have to break.
There's a building that's down Blossom Lane, that has the doctors, all have the dentists in there. That's two, uh, two or three.
But it's with the baby, and to go forty-five feet.
And I'm sure City Council has an opinion on this. I know this is a big topic for them. I don't know if you guys want to punt this, or City Council.
Well, hopefully, don't be, don't be our way in anyway.
Yeah.
I'll work on it, make a suggestion.
Do be our way in anyway. This is one of their further review anyway, so.
Listen, I, I can tell they're, uh, really wanting to have public comment. Are we getting close to that?
Um, we are not getting close to it. Um, we will, I mean, there is a time at the end of Alexandria Pike and Neighborhood Commercial where we will have an opportunity.
Okay, thanks. So Island Heights, uh, has a general commercial site that's, it's before you cross over, Two-Sixty-Five. It looks like that general commercial has a maximum building, uh, three stories of forty feet. And the last such building, step back from the street. So it's forty-five for three stories. I can look up.
Sorry, Frank, we can't hear you.
Keep the microphone, sorry.
Island Heights has a general commercial zone that is north of the Two-Sixty-Five overpass. So it's before you cross over. Uh, they have a general commercial zone there that has a height restriction on forty feet.
Okay, thank you.
And three stories.
Well, that's a question. Do you want to decrease it in general, or just for residential over non-residential?
I think in general.
Okay, in general, okay. How, how much do you want to reduce it?
What are you thinking?
I would be in favor of a forty feet if we did the three stories for forty feet.
Does everyone agree with that?
That's just my opinion.
It's okay.
Could you define that? Is that different than three stories and forty feet? Because I'm thinking three stories and forty feet.
So three stories or forty feet.
Would let you go higher than forty.
Would let you go higher.
Yep.
I mean, and, um, so what do you want to do? I mean, we can phrase it.
So, for the height restriction, so if we left it at the three stories at forty feet, and somebody, for whatever reason, wanted to go to forty-five, or forty-eight, or whatever the case is, they could ask for a variance from, sort of adjustment?
Yes, they are allowed, the building height is specifically listed as a requested variance from NCRS one hundred. So if you do three stories or forty feet, that will be my land.
I thought, I was thinking.
Yeah.
Well, forty feet prevent you from having three stories, doesn't it? From a practical standpoint?
Yeah.
If you've got commercial and then residential above.
Practically, yes. I mean, I, I don't want to say that, but, because typically, most first floors these days that are non-residential are going to be fifteen feet, generally speaking. Okay. But that, I mean, sure enough, as I say, you know, somebody's going to propose it. But, I would like to cap it at forty feet, and then if they want a variance, they can come to the.
Sort of adjustment.
Yeah, the order of adjustments. I mean, I don't know that it's necessary to, if you, if you just want to cap forty feet, you just put forty feet, don't worry about stories.
Correct. I mean, that's what I would suggest.
Yeah, I mean, because you, you could have a situation, potentially, at least with a commercial use, that doesn't have residential above, where you have a high bay.
Yeah.
Twenty-four, high open, like, I'm not saying, but an auto dealer there, but, you know, something like that, where you'd have a display room, or something where you need vertical space, for, for whatever reason. Or even if it's some type of a, of an office space, and you just want to have an atrium or something, and then the front lobby space, that may be twenty-four, you know, twenty-five feet tall, and that, so I think it could give you the flexibility.
All right, forty feet. Okay, now is that for both sub zones, or is it just for this one, for the southern area?
Maybe for both, I don't see anything being built in the northern area like this. You just keep it both.
Yeah. I mean, the new building that just went in, certainly, they had fifty feet, and certainly did not use it. Right, so, okay, so forty feet max height for both sub zones. And then, R3, R3 standards for density. And then, do you want residential over non-residential in both sub zones, or just the, the bottom one?
Is it permitted, is it permitted use, or?
As a permitted, permitted by.
I'd be for both.
For both.
I guess one other question I had was, when we talked about this last night in residential zones, but do we want to have any guidance in terms of orientation, building heads front towards Twenty-Six?
We, that's already in the code.
Okay, good. I think, yeah. I think, I think I was in one of the prior code updates, because I remember having this section about that at some point.
So, uh, let me rephrase that. And we're about to get to this next. So, um, we just go to there. So, the required design standards that would require it, a building to be oriented toward Twenty-Six, and those kinds of things, also requires it to have a usable entrance, to have transparent areas, to have glazing in the upper floors, to have a transition line, and the first floor with a view into the building, and accommodation of materials and finishes that create interest. Um, and the building materials that tend to be, have to be durable. All of that, under this current draft, only applies in the southern area. Because of our conversation that we had in Phase Two, that mixed use one, that mixed use two was a more car-centered type of area, and maybe not as important to have the design standards. So, the answer to your question is, no, you head toward I-471. And the question here is, should they apply? In both sub zones?
Discussion I remember was, we had one that was walkable, and one was really more out, and I don't see the point in doing it, and I'm, I don't know that.
And that's why, that's why the Phase Three draft says that. Is that it's meant to be walkable, and it's in, you know, the lower one, mixed use one, not walkable, mixed use two. So why put these standards on them? And that's why I drafted Phase Three that way. Having said that, if it's important to you to have the buildings oriented toward US Twenty-Six.
I mean, they all are today, really, till March, I think. Even March.
March will be kind of, it's oddly shaped site, and an oddly shaped building. Um, but you have the new one, that was the new office building, that's near the side of the street from Marsh. It, it's, you know, it has corners on the plaza. I mean, it, it addresses the street, even though it's, you know, up the hill.
Yeah. I mean, ultimately, I could see, potentially, that the cabinet would reduce Twenty-Six in this area, four to three lanes, like they did in South.
Right, do it, a di, a road diet.
Road diet, and you could potentially have sidewalks somewhere down the road. Not literally, but figuratively. Um, and, you know, I think you would want it to have the ability, at some point in the future, for it to be more walkable than it might be today. So, I mean, I think it would be good for the building, it'd be oriented towards the street, with the entrance.
Okay, so.
Because there's really not physically a lot of space to rotate the buildings anywhere.
No, there's not. But that doesn't mean that they couldn't have a blank face facing US Twenty-Six with no entrance, entrance, and then be entrance from, you know, from the back. Um, so, I mean, do you want me to at least have a requirement for a usable entrance and oriented toward the street? Or, I mean, is it those two standards for mixed use two?
Yes.
Okay. So again, um, we were talking in Phase Two, again, because of the whole walkable nature potentially of the next one, and personally, there's a prohibition against front yard parking in the mixed use one sub-district. And the prohibition, there's not a prohibition in the MX Two. Are you okay with that? So front yard parking would be permitted if you're heading toward I-471. Okay, with that?
Can you repeat that?
Sure. So, um, right now, front yard parking is prohibited in the Alexandria Pike which is one. So between the building and the front lot line, you would not be allowed to have parking in the lower portion of the district. As it's currently drafted, the upper portion of the district, you wouldn't be allowed to have front yard parking. And the planning commission said that they're okay with how it's currently drafted.
What is lower?
You mean north of the South?
Yes. Uh, I'm sorry. The southern portion, the MX one, which is this, as you see on the screen, front yard parking would be prohibited. When you get to Blossom, you're heading toward I-471, you would be allowed to have front yard parking. Meaning parking between the building and the front lot line.
Like the RISB?
Like the RISB. Like the liquor store, like the new office building.
Right.
Like the office buildings that are at the corner of South Fort Thomas and US Twenty-Six. All of that, like, that front yard parking would be allowed to continue. And if the site's redeveloped, they'd be allowed to continue to do that in the MX Two district.
But like, the, the Hugh Hall, or the, the Kaylee's building there, how it has parking between the building and the street, if there was a new building, if there was a new building ever could.
ever constructed there, the building would have to be closer to the street, or at least it would have landscape between the building and the street, and the park would have to be in the rear.
Or to the side.
To the side and rear.
Right. So now we're going to talk about some actual zoning of lots. So what you see on the screen is the YMCA, and we've talked about throughout this process that we're trying to get rid of some of our parcels that are split zoned. And as we've talked about in the past, this probably happened as a result of bad digitizing of paper maps in the flat, in the past. Um, currently, the YMCA is split zoned, as you see on the screen, a portion of the side closest to US, to US twenty-seven is owned professional office. Then the building is bisected by the zoning ordinance, the zoning district boundary, and a part of the building and the parking lot are zoned R one C. Um, and so if you put all of it into the mixed use two sub-district, then it would be a conforming use permitted by right. Um, if you decide that you think it should be R one C of all of it, um, it would be a conditional use in that. For a little bit of context, you can kind of not see it here, there is a flag lot that goes back to some R three lot, R three multifamily immediately to the north of it, and then immediately to the south is an office building. And so in order to clear up this, you know, bad digitizing, what do you think would be appropriate for this parcel?
The mixed use two. Yeah, I agree with that. To make the whole lot into the mixed use.
We can't hear you, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you now.
The mixed use two.
And again, this is not really, we're just trying to clear up a bad situation. So we have another one, uh, this is Twenty Pleasant Avenue, and it's currently split zoned between professional office and R three. Currently, the zoning district boundary bisects a building that with multifamily dwelling units in it. What's closest to US twenty-seven is zoned professional office. What's behind it is zoned R three. And as I said, zoning district boundary lines of through that building that has apartments in it. Um, so would it be appropriate to zone entire parcel R three?
Yes, and there is a parcel line between those two, I mean, it looks like it's a parcel line going through the building, but I.
There actually is not a parcel line.
Okay.
Uh, I actually looked because I thought, how did this happen? Um, I.
But, well, I guess what I'm saying, there's a parcel line between the building front on twenty-seven and then the apartment.
Yes, there is, there is a parcel line between that small office building.
Your, your little highlight there, just like, it's like, screw the, like, I'm.
Sorry.
I just want to make sure there is.
Speaking of bad digitizing, but, um, yes, so yes, there is a parcel line.
The, the LinkGIS doesn't look like it shows on that line.
Yes, yes, it does. There is a parcel line there, um, so we can immediately follow the parcel line and put everything for the apartment complex into R three, if y'all are okay with that.
Yes.
Yes.
So we are moving on to the neighborhood commercial office district. This is the only commercial mixed use district that is not place-based, meaning it is use-based, but with some regulations that mitigate the impacts for some of the uses in certain locations. The neighborhood commercial office district is currently being considered at Fort Thomas Plaza, which is currently zoned general commercial. Commercial office uses at Highland and Grand, which are a mixture of professional office and general commercial today, and then the intersection at South Fort Thomas and Big Wap, which is currently professional office. The commercial office district will also be used at two thousand Memorial Parkway, which is where there's a veterinary clinic today. And then also at nineteen sixty Memorial Parkway, uh, which is currently will be also zoned neighborhood commercial office. It's where the Bella Dance is today. Um, and it was rezoned from R one C to professional office in two thousand and eighteen. So again, uh, we're asking questions about if should we permit co-working by right in the neighborhood commercial office? Okay. And the next question is churches, places of worship. Um, we've heard that perhaps, right now, there's a restraint, it's restricted use, um, is restricted such that it cannot go at six hundred South Fort Thomas Avenue, which is where the former Heartland Bank building is. Um, someone has said that perhaps a church would be appropriate on that lot, and so should we remove that restriction and say that a place of worship is, can be located anywhere within the neighborhood commercial office district?
The only concern I have about a church or a place of worship would be depending on what the attendance is, if it'd be a traffic parking situation.
Yeah, which is why I originally drafted it such that it couldn't go with that lot, the size of that lot, and the amount of traffic, and then the odd formation of the streets there, you know, South Fort Thomas takes a dog leg, and then you have lots of, that would, uh, lots more right there. So it's just an odd-shaped lot, it's small, you've got three streets happening there, it could potentially be, um, a problem, which is why it was drafted that way. But someone had said perhaps a neighborhood church would be nice there. Uh, yeah, I think it would be, they would think it would be.
It's just a matter of what is the capacity the applicant would be asking for, you know? I think it could work, but it wouldn't always work.
It wouldn't always work, and so, um, because again, this is not a, this is a, not a place-based district, it is a district that is use-based in all of these disparate places, this is the best way to handle that. Keep in mind that because it would be a use variance, they would not be able to give that. So a church, as it's currently drafted, would never be able to go on that lot.
You couldn't make it a conditional use.
We could, we could make it a conditional use, um.
Cause that way it would become almost more state specific.
It would become a more site specific. That certainly would work, and they would have the ability then to go to the BOA and then have it be with that.
It could also apply to here in free zone.
It's, we could have it in zone.
Right, right.
But I think a conditional use might work.
I'd be scared.
I don't get that.
So we have modified the development standards table to prohibit the planning commission from granting a waiver to the maximum height regulation in the neighborhood commercial office district. Uh, but keep in mind that the planning commission could grant a waiver to the minimum height, just not the maximum height. And as we said earlier, an applicant still could request a variance from the board of adjustment for the maximum height. This is a change from phase two to phase three, is to remove the ability to grant a waiver to maximum height in this district. And we're back to short terminal. So, but we're talking about them in the context of these two commercial districts. Um, you know, so as I said last night, the definition for short terminal properties was created in twenty twenty-one as an accessory use, no matter what district this short terminal was made in, when they were enacted, it was listed as an accessory use in the general commercial district. Um, unless you particularly want me to, I'm not going to run back through the existing regulations, I don't, I don't think we necessarily need to do that, uh, but we need to think about for those potentially residential over non-residential, uh, which do exist today, I mean, you have, the civil properties I've already talked about, plus potential sort of the future, how do you want to treat short terminals in these two non-residential districts?
It seems like we're akin to the R three type thing, and, I mean, we want to just prohibit it.
Yes.
Seems like Ozzy, that, that's what we did for all the other R three.
Yeah, we did, yeah. So it's a prohibited use.
So, I just trying to refresh my mind here, so like the Inverness, is that Inverness or is it not?
So that's traditional business district.
Traditional business.
And so we're actually going to have the same question when we get there.
Okay.
But for these two districts here, what I'm hearing you say is that you want short terminals to be prohibited in Alexandria Pike and the neighborhood commercial office. All right, we'll get up to comments at the end of the queue.
I guess.
I have a question. Should I come over or?
Please.
Okay, I'll bring my stuff up. Hi, Sharon McKnight, sixty-two Miller Lane. Um, you guys were, um, talking about, um, the general commercial residential over, um, general commercial. Uh, I knew this, this amendment happened back in twenty nineteen when they did this for Petrino's. They take, they took the personal office space and asked for amendment to make a general commercial, and since there's people living on top of it, they had to allow, um, residential on top. So they had a public hearing at that meeting, of course you guys know, you were there. And, um, so the abutting neighbors could have a say about this, and, um, which makes sense because, you know, maybe they would have a say about that. But at this meeting, it seemed that the whole town, that general commercial, it was allowed to have residential on top without having another meeting and calling for public input for the other areas, and why was that? Do you know? I mean, it just became generalized to the entire city. From the twenty nineteen meeting, when that amendment was fixed?
I, I believe they were allowed to have residential over commercial well before twenty nineteen.
No, it was switched.
Not in the GC.
No, not in general commercials, no. It, this all happened in twenty nineteen, cause Tim was discussing it at last month's meeting, and I looked into it, and it happened at the, um, twelve eleven twenty nineteen meeting, and it turned into an ordinance by January of the following.
So I was here then, but when you amend the tax for a use-based district, any place that's at, that is, that is zoned general commercial, when you amend the tax to allow a use, then that use becomes permitted anywhere that is zoned general commercial. So even though it, they, the context of the conversation may have been Petrino's.
Yes.
But it then, because it was a text amendment that affected general commercial, any place zoned general commercial would then be allowed to have that use.
Without having that public hearing in other areas, like they had to post that public hearing, have those three amendments for that meeting, so you.
I don't know what happened in two thousand and nineteen, but I can tell you that when you amend the tax, it affects any place zoned general commercial.
Sharon, we can look into it, I wasn't here.
Oh, okay, cause I have all that information, cause you were talking about last month, you guys, you said you looked into it in twenty nineteen on some of these, um, text amendments, and there was three done at that meeting, and it affected the entire city, and I thought it was interesting, cause the bare minimum you posted on the telephone pool, so people could, um, have an input on, you know, whoever walks on going to attend that meeting, but that affected the whole city. So people that live by Bob Hile's buildings, those neighborhoods, whoever bought it against their property was never informed and they never had a public hearing, it was just changed throughout the whole city. And that's what I'm asking, you have to have a public hearing for all those other areas that was going to affect.
Taking interest, no, you don't.
Really? You could just do that?
If you do a text amendment, we're facing a basis set.
Really?
So, so, but keep in mind, there's a difference between a text amendment and a zoning map amendment. And a zoning text amendment is different from a zoning map, where a zoning map happens, you have to notify all the neighbors that are affected by the map amendment change. The text amendment is not the same.
So when, when you're changing it from personal office to general commercial, that's a just zone change, so you have to let the neighbors around you know about that? Is that what you're talking about, why that public hearing was held?
So I don't know what happened in two thousand and nineteen, so did they rezone it from professional office to general commercial?
To general commercial, but it had, um, this personal office space, it residential on top, so then what?
You've been there always.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so I think you figured out what happened from what, from this context.
Okay, thank you.
If it was professional office before.
Yes.
Professional office since two thousand and twelve has allowed residential over non-residential.
Correct.
So, then they zoned it general commercial, which is a map amendment.
Okay.
And everyone around you has to be notified per KRS one hundred, because they changed it from professional office to general commercial.
Okay.
Then at the same time, they must have done a text amendment that allowed, in fact, I know they did, they did a text amendment that allowed residential over non-residential for general commercial, and then that text amendment.
Okay.
Did not, no one had to be notified, it has to be published, but no one has to be notified by, um, mail, because it is a text amendment, not a map amendment.
Okay, so.
I know that sounds very pedantic.
Yeah, it's hard. So you could just make this like what she did, um, without notifying anybody saying, hey, you know, you could have fifty-foot tall buildings with residentials over it, but you guys don't know about it.
But again, that height restriction has been in place for a long time.
How long?
Since two thousand and twelve at least.
Two thousand and twelve, and when was the waiver put in place, allowed to go over fifty feet?
That probably had for a profession, again, that, that waiver is only in the professional office district.
Okay.
And that dates back to, to best of my knowledge, to two thousand and twelve.
Okay, so they couldn't go over fifty feet, which fifty feet too tall anyway.
But, but keep in mind, even if they, if we take away all the waiver provisions for height, someone can still go to the board of adjustment and request a variance to the height.
And, and you can't put a restriction on that?
No, you cannot.
Well, you can restrict it, but they can still get a variance.
They can still get a variance, right, because that is in the definition for a variance in KRS one hundred.
That's interesting, okay. Did you want this information or?
Sure.
Okay, look into that. I, I, I just think that's very unusual, I think if I was abutting that property, I'd want to know, so.
Okay, all right. Hey, you manage, you have thirty-seven South Shaw Lane, I'm reading it out. And do you want the number? Yeah. Well, I know that, but you know, you know, I, I just.
Uh, this is just something I'll talk about in a second, but this is, that's all I'd like to talk about, some of the topics that happened at the copy and conversation, I appreciate that we get to talk about that this month. Um, but the first thing that we had on here, um, well, let me just start by what just happened here. So what just happened here was I saw a decision made based on, uh, what wouldn't restrict the property owner unfairly. Um, what I didn't see happen was the public's opinion taken into consideration. From the two thousand and eighteen comprehensive plan, only twenty-eight percent of the respondents wanted to create more housing in and/or adjacent to local districts. That's exactly what y'all just did, um, by putting residential over non-residential. A city council member told me that we are one of the densest cities in the entire United States for more dense than Philadelphia. And I haven't heard, three city council people told me that they haven't had one constituent come to them and tell them that they want Fort Thomas to be more dense. But somehow we're coming up with these mixed use districts that are doing nothing but that. When I look at the comprehensive plan that y'all adopted, um, and again, we talked, I talked about this a little bit last night, but page seven, I don't know which show you did it, but I thought it was brilliant, page seven is begin with the end in mind, which is from Stephen Covey's, this having him as highly effective people. And when we're looking at these kind of decisions like you just made over at the Bob Howe property, I'd ask you to begin with the end in mind. The overall vision for Fort Thomas is replete with family-friendly community, um, community, city in a park, um, all of the goals, objectives and vision for planning and zoning, not one of them has to do with mixed use, not one of them has to do with increased density. One of them is ensure that new economic development is compatible with and enhances the existing character of the surrounding area and the overall city in a park character. How on earth does a four-story, three, oh, sorry, a forty-foot, three-story with two, um, stories of residential at all blend into that neighborhood down there? On one side, you have a condominium complex, which is two stories. On the other side, you have residential, and I disagree that there's a cemetery, a scene on a bunch of businesses. There's not, there's Hollywood's Drive, which is residential, there's Hawthorne that's residential, Hawthorne comes around the back and is residential. Across the street, you have a street that's residential. Across the street, you have a street that's residential. This is, as we talked about two years ago, it's a residential neighborhood out there. That was ours. That's where people went and shopped. Never in Fort Thomas history was it envisioned that we would put mixed-use development out on that parcel. So if you want to listen to what people have to say and make that part, beginning with the end in mind, so beginning with the end in mind, small-town character and charm, it's all in your goals. Number two, we're a residential bedroom community, we're not trying to pack them in. And number three, we need to maintain our historic significance. That's what you all passed when you passed your vision and your goals and objectives. I even heard one person in Fort Thomas shout who wants more density. Nowhere here does it talk about density. Nowhere in the vision does it talk about mixed use. Where that does come in is in the strategy section. And however it happened, I don't know, because again, going back to this 2018. And I'm getting to the point of talking about pulling some of this out of the zoning code. Pretty crazy, though. So we don't have the actual questionnaire. Did you guys do that questionnaire, or did Human Nature do that questionnaire in 2018?
So we facilitated the questionnaire.
Who wrote it?
In each of the committees, there were six committees.
Right.
Because there were six chapters. Each committee had a councilperson and a planning permission and a staff person. And each committee developed those sets of questions, then we took those sets of questions.
The reason I'm asking for it is because nobody can find it up here. Nobody can find the questionnaire. So if you have it in your computer somewhere over at CTE, I would love to see it. But we do have some answers. But the most interesting thing to me is that, as I just quoted, only 28% want to create more housing inter-adjacent to local business districts. Guess what priority objective number one is? Allow housing in business districts. We have encourage new, oh, here's, the question was, let me find it here. It was, oh, again, the same question, you know, do you want more housing inter-adjacent to the local district? Less than 30% of people want it. Here's objective number four, encourage more diverse housing options along Alexandria Pike. We have, number two, encourage new housing redevelopment adjacent to business districts. So exactly almost what the question was, we have the priority objectives, and apparently either you guys didn't know the answer, or you didn't care what the public thought. I have absolutely no idea. 83%, the majority respondents, are in opinion that there's sufficient housing types in Fort Thomas. Of that 83, 17% that want more housing types, the vast majority want it, single-family housing. But yet here we are, doing mixed-use districts, that nobody ever mentioned they had the appetite for. So again, it just goes on and on. I know that Timothy gave you this yesterday. But one of the reasons Elisa put throughout the new zoning code, throughout it, there are references to the comprehensive plan. And in some places, it's quoted chapter and verse. As we talked about last night, somehow in the back of the comprehensive plan gets, even though we have that people don't want it, that we're going to increase density in both of the CBD and Midway, even though folks are telling you don't want it. So Elisa has that as the intent in the Unified Zoning Code. So I'm asking that we, a lot has happened since 2018. We're over five years when this should have been looked at anyway. But between 2018 and now, we had COVID, which basically crippled retail businesses. We also got One Highland. Before that, we did not know what a building of that magnitude would look like. We now have had not only this survey, which was just published in August of 2023, by the way, on the website, but we have a new survey from Brantville. We have people telling you that you want to keep, they want to keep this the way it is. So I'm asking, and this is one of the community comments, that we take these references to increased density that isn't supported by evidence that I can see out of the Unified Zoning Code. Twice last summer, I was out of town, but one of these meetings in a city council, it came up that Peggy Mancheo was going to work with Matt on the comprehensive plan. I got calls, hey, you know, whatever. I took a deep dive just into the zoning portion of it, and came up with a lot of these areas that are either not supported by evidence, contradicted by evidence that I just talked about, or pure speculation. So I gave Matt a document for that. We met for one hour. But I will be glad to email that to any of you who would like to see that. And again, these are just factual deletions that we can take out of here, that have to do with this increased density that nobody wants, and increasing housing in these business districts, which are against this plan. So anyway, I just want to talk about that and ask you to be thoughtful about what you base your decisions on, because I know, for example, that there's people on city council who are very concerned about increased density in this town, and they're the ones that make policy. But that's reflected in the city plan right here, in terms of the objectives and the vision. The next thing I'd like to talk to you about very briefly, and this is what these handouts are about.
We'll pass five minutes, so we probably need to.
And we will talk about what you handed down is from Central Business District, and we'll have another opportunity to talk about that further on in the presentation. Okay? Thank you.
That should be my time, if you want to keep talking.
Okay.
She just gave you your time.
We're just fine. She was at six minutes.
I'll do five next time.
You can.
I don't have any complaints. I just have a question. I was made aware that you had a meeting last night, and of course, today, but I did not know it was segmented. Are you willing to answer a few questions about section 3.1?
Interesting.
That's residential.
Sure.
Sure, I guess so.
Problem is, we're. I haven't been following the process, but have there been any, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but have there been any questions or comments about size setbacks in residential areas, or is that a non-issue?
So we have actually, in most of the, and I don't know where you live, I apologize, several of the zoning districts, we have decreased the size setbacks, because so many of the homes don't conform to the existing standards.
I'm in R1CP, the size setback is eight feet. And, you know, there may be people who think that that's too big, and might be people who think it's too, too small, but, I mean, whatever, it's eight feet right now on both sides, as you, on the entire length of the property. But as you turn the corner, it becomes 30 feet. So it doesn't just double, it doesn't triple, it almost quadruples. And what that means is if my neighbor behind me wants to build something, and I want to build something, there becomes a 60-foot no-man's land between our properties, and that's even wider than our lot, which I think is a little bit extreme. So I don't know if it's too late. I would just ask if that's something you all would consider changing. I understand it might be reduced, but I would, just for the sake of simplicity, maybe consider making it eight feet all the way around. I think that would help a lot of people. When I started on the Board of Adjustment in Covington, one of our goals was to sort of make property as usable as possible, to keep people from leaving the city. Now, you may not have that goal, but this policy, as it is right now, is 30 feet. It renders this property just unusable. You can't get the full use of your property. So that's just something I would ask, if you were considering your process, if you would change that to maybe eight feet?
Could you let us know where you live?
I live at 5 Rosemont Avenue. In fact, it's, again, I think it's the R1CP zone, and, you know, that's all I'm here to do, is ask for that kind of consideration.
So I'm not really sure why you're, the only time 30 feet would apply is if at some point in time, your side or becomes a rear yard, or you're on a corner. So I need to look at your lot to figure out where you are. May I give you my contact information?
Yes. Okay, give me a minute to see if I'm walking.
Oh, sorry.
I stepped on a door for me grip.
So.
I'm trying to see if you walked wrong.
Okay. Reach out to me, and let's figure out what your situation is.
Okay, very good.
But for your information, in the R1C, the size setback would be five feet with a total of 14 feet for both sides, is what's being proposed. And that may or may not help you, but I think I need to look at your lot and see what's happening.
I think Mr. Lance is talking about the rear setback.
I don't think it can be, is the rear setback.
Well, and that's, I think the rationale he's asking for is that why couldn't the rear be that much shorter as well?
So right now, and that change would be 25 feet?
The reason why I brought up the size setback is not to confuse, but to point out that nobody really seems to object about it. I mean, if I pull out a pavement around my window, I'll go 16 feet before I hit my neighbor's property. I don't care, that's fine. But, you know, when you have a structure and there's 30 feet behind before your parking lot, you tend to not be able to maintain as well what you can't see, and just becomes an area that's just unusable. So I hope nobody else has a 30-foot setback. If that's just consistent with my property only, then I hope it would get changed.
So the rear setback right now, as it's being currently proposed in the R1C, is now 25 feet?
Yes, I understand there's a five-feet change that might be, but I would recommend a little further.
50 feet, in terms of, if you have two properties that back up to each other, you would still, both of you would have, at least 50 feet. And that, we certainly continue to talk about that.
That's the correct direction. But I just don't understand why you wouldn't just make it all the same. I mean, we already agree that eight feet's fine for the sides.
Alicia, is it something that can be addressed with a variance, though, if you want to build something?
But I think he and I probably should have a conversation about how all of this works. And I'm happy just to do that offline, if you're.
Yes, yes, thank you for listening to me, and I just wanted to get it codified and kind of get it in the zoning code itself, so you wouldn't have to ask for a variance. That's all. Okay?
Thank you. Tell me your name.
My name is Pat. Last name is Lance.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
And as gentlemen, I just want to make sure everybody knows, we're going to get to talk again after the next session. I don't want to name anything.
Write it down.
I got it. Wait a minute, I'm going to reset.
No, no, it's good. What time you told me to not talk? This is being heard.
I didn't do anything.
Could you put them on?
It is some.
No, this is the only opportunity we have to talk. No way of contacting them.
And after this next session, we'll talk again, without a doubt.
My question, and it came up with some of Tim's really good concerns about height of the buildings. When it was 50, that is just a chilling number to me, 50-foot high. So with your encouragement, thank you for that, you got it down to 40. With immediately, you could get a variance in the Board of Adjustments with an endless height. So this 40 is just, so it gets voted in, but you want it to be 10 stories, you want it to be 90 feet tall? I don't know, this is the high-rise, and this is residential over commercial. And it's like, you want it to make it pleasing and attractive to developers. And again, I think this goes back to, are we here for the city, the residents? Because we are a bedroom community, as Peggy mentioned, always have been. Or do we just want it to be, you know, urban? I know that that's a directive coming from DC, has been for the last few years, but I don't think that that's who we are. My other thing was, who would ever, one of the comments was, who would ever be wanting to do that? I see it, and this is just right off the top of my head, if you've got as high as you want, and as many units as you want, you can, and you could have very tiny units, you could have student, basically, student apartments for norther. And on the ground floor, Jimmy John's, or Domino's, or something. So there's your business. And then you've got unlimited height above it. I think that's a door, and it's like, well, that's amazing, it might not happen. Opening the door makes it strong.
Unfortunately, the fact that you can grant a variance is enshrined in KRS 100 for max height.
I understand.
So that is not something that we have the ability to, why would they worry about variance?
So I guess I'll go back to the question that I asked, I don't know if it was last night or a different meeting, why are we doing all of this? I just don't see anything in concrete. And it seems like a lot of time, a lot of anguish, a lot of research, a lot of.
To some degree.
Thank you.
If a property owner wants to get a variance for height or for any other dimensional variance, they have to make the case of why they are deserving of getting that variance. So they have to make the case that I can't build what I need to build under 40 feet because of X reason, and that group of people on the Board of Adjustments has to agree with that, convey with that argument. So you're not, we're not just saying carte blanche, go to the Board of Adjustment, they'll check the box, and there you go. There has to be a compelling reason why they need a variance.
In theory, I absolutely understand what you're saying. I guess it discourages me to say, we can do this variance, don't forget about that. That'll make it more attractive to developers, not.
I don't think our goal is necessarily to make anything more attractive to developers.
Well, we mentioned it tonight, so.
I think what we're trying to say is that if there is a unique circumstance in any given property within the city that arbitrations just really don't work for, for a particular reason or a particular location, then at least somebody can have an independent judgment of the facts in that specific case.
One more thing, if you don't mind, silly, because it went back and forth, are hotels going to be allowed anywhere in the city?
So what we were talking about specifically was Alexandria Pike, and they said no. And so where they are going to be allowed, as we currently talked about it, and we'll talk about it a little bit more in a minute, in the Traditional Business District, is they would be allowed in neighborhood office commercials, neighborhood commercials.
Not with bidwax.
But not a bidwax. They specifically would not be allowed at bidwax, but they would be allowed in those other scattered sites.
Okay, I think that needs to be made clear to the people, it would be near those other scattered sites. Hotel sounds just kind of scary. And also, I hate to say it, but so does church, because none of these are huge. It would not be what I would consider, I don't know if the word is parish, you know, like there are churches, we have a bunch of them in our town, which I love, that's great. But most of them are bigger, they're not small, if you just have a tiny little lot, I don't know what type of church.
That's why we decided to make it a conditional use, not a permitted use. So that way, again, somebody would have to come in and on a site-specific basis, make the case that it wouldn't be disrupted.
And that's allowed bidwax, it would be a conditional, it would be permitted in all of the other sites, and conditional at bidwax.
The churches welcome the hotel?
Oh, they can show everywhere.
Oh, I apologize. The church, the church is always conditional. And the hotel is permitted except at bidwax.
Correct. Thank you for clarifying that.
Tiffany Hoover, 26 Hawthorne Avenue. So of course, this discussion directly impacts me. I would ask you guys to take that into account as well when you're doing, I mean, when you're making decisions about the zoning, because I don't think it's going to impact most people here or on the council. But I just want to reiterate what Peggy said about the small-town feel. I've been on my street for 28 years, I never envisioned 50-foot building in the site. It's permitted today. I know it is. That's not what I said. Okay, I apologize. I apologize. I'm sorry. It's just, when you guys talk about these things, it's so drastic, like what happened with the middle of town. We support One Highland because we want it to be successful, but this is not something we want to cross our town. And I don't think any of you all would want that right next to you either. I just don't. It just takes away from our neighborhood, and it's easy to say, put that over there, or let them build, you know, higher and bigger. I do appreciate you reducing the height, I think that was the scariest thing, but also in terms of just how much you pack into a small area. Because again, I mean, I grew up when that was Hater Hardware and IBA, and actually, it was still there when we moved on the street. But again, it's a neighborhood, I'm just asking you to remember that. Thank you.
So now we'll move on to the Traditional District. Oh, I'm sorry, please go ahead, sir. I'm sorry. Yeah, come on. I'm sorry.
John D. Cofflin, Tom Lee, John Cofflin Jr., since there's two obviously in this I would like to thank Mr. Barbin for keeping me informed. I'm a little bit of old school, I pick up the telephone, call, we step into calls. Our family owns the property, I think most of you know, at the corner of River Road and South Ward Towns Avenue. Our family owns the property, I think most of you know, at the corner of River Road and South Port Thomas Avenue. Address is 1100 South, and then we also own three properties holding down River Road. From my past experience, those properties have always been some professional office. Turn 65 here, Cheryl, Charlie, and reading glasses and colorblind just don't help me a whole lot. And the map that I see here, I can't tell what that is, I can't see the colors, the block lines are so small. I would just like to know, and my reason for coming this evening was, Mr. Barbie said this was the meeting that they were going to address the Midway District zoning, that's why I attended. But however, when I look at the agenda, I don't see Midway District zoning written out on the agenda, unless I'm misreading something. So that's why I took this opportunity to come up. I respect the city up and in this town since I was four years old. My father still lives in the same house that we did when I was four. So I support the city and everything is done. But for the essence of my town, your city website said this meeting was from 6:00 to 7:30. I made an appointment to do my job with another family at 8:00. I'd set that, I'd text him back and forth and told him where I'm at, what I'm doing, because this is very important to me. If we get to it, if it's going to be discussed, I'll stay. Not out of disrespect, I may exit. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, so we are going to, we're heading toward the Midway at this point, but currently, those parcels, if I am looking at the correct ones on the map, are Zone Central Business District.
Well, I have a map from years ago that said professional office.
Okay, that may be the case.
This may have been professional office before CBD, when it turned to CBD was probably in the early 2000s. But it's been CBD for a long time. And we're going to keep it CBD, and there's going to be some minor, I don't even know, significant changes. But there's going to be some discussion about it as we move forward.
So I'll stay and wait for the rest of the...
So, Paige, John, through the CBD ends at 17.
Correct.
So 17 is probably large. 19 is in R1C.
Which is, used to be Ruth Lucas, now it's a gentleman by the name of Keith, I can't remember his last name, he's a great young man.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, yes, sir, thanks, Ryan, appreciate it. Thank you.
So on the screen is a map of the traditional business district, which is in Burness. As you know, there are two existing mixed-use buildings on the corners. One is on the corner of Robert Way and North Fort Thomas, and the other is on the corner of North Fort Thomas and Memorial Parkway. And that's going to be important as we launch this discussion. So currently, in the Phase 3 draft, hotels are permitted by right in the traditional business district. We have heard feedback that hotels should all be permitted in existing buildings. So the two that I specifically mentioned, one of which is on the screen. If you concur, hotels can be restricted use in the traditional business district, and the restriction would be that they have to be in existing building and none could be built, for example, where the gas station is now. So the first question is, how should hotels be treated in the general, in Burness?
What parking, what parking requirements do you have for a hotel? Because I don't see how you can convert that to a hotel without tearing down a lot of other buildings.
Right, so in the traditional business district, just like in the central business district, they would have to request a waiver for parking. Certainly, the other option is you can remove it as a permitted use. It's certainly an option as well.
That would make more sense to me.
Remove hotels as a permitted use in CBD?
It doesn't seem like a sensible use.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. And then again, co-working spaces as a permitted use, if y'all are okay with that? So we're moving on to the central business district, specifically the Town Center or Downtown. So again, we have the same question about co-working spaces. But then, keep in mind that we have our subzoning districts, and so we spent a few minutes reminding you of what those are. The areas in blue are the Town Center Supporting Subzoning District, and basically, that runs from Shone to Forest Avenue, and then where the US Bank is to the post office. The purple is the Central Business District Town Center Core, which is One Highland and the buildings across the street that include the home of the former Fort Thomas Coffee and where the new big store is. I meant to remind you of the nature of these sub-districts. The Supporting Subzoning District, the max height is 35 feet. And in the core, which is purple, it's 40 feet. Any concerns about allowing co-working spaces in the Town Center Core? How about in the supporting? Yeah, because that's a different nature, the district is meant to be less intense, the height's intense, the buildings, development standards are less intense, those kinds of things. I can certainly see where you could go either direction. What do you want to do?
Can you tell us what those are?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Co-working, what are they?
Yeah.
So co-working is basically a revolving office space. It's where people come in either by membership or by renting, lease space. It's the people who work from home and want an office space outside of their home, so they could have internet usage. Or people who are working from home, but then occasionally need a conference room, so they go in and rent a space, it's a co-working space. And so as we were talking about earlier, it in some ways acts and smells like an office building, but it can be more intense depending upon how it's run.
So is it like the one that fronts from the Shell gas station? The little executive, the professional office building?
Yeah, 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 so it could be like that. So in the supporting sub-district, which is less intense in terms of its height and development restrictions, the question is, should co-working be a permitted use?
That building is a little bit of a hybrid, because they're a little bit like leased that permanently as well. But I do, they do these like common terms, I think, there, if you want to have a meeting. But there are tenants in there, so it's a little bit of a hybrid. And it could be the same here, too.
You're right, and it is, in some ways.
It's likely to be.
Yeah, likely to be.
So what does more intense mean then, when you're saying that? Because that's not really an intense building.
I'm meaning that there are more people coming in, potentially, more people coming and going in a co-working space than in a traditional office. Because in a traditional office, typically, people come at eight, they leave at five.
But that's not typical.
That's not typical anymore. But in a co-working space, the same, to give you an example, the same desk could be used by three different people in a day. And there could be, you know, four different people renting the conference room throughout the day. So it is a more intense use potentially than an office space.
Is there a higher ramp for that?
I know.
There is, actually.
Yes.
There really is.
Okay.
There's one in my tiny little town.
Isn't Fort Thomas Coffee already doing that also?
Essentially.
Essentially, yes, they are doing that.
Yeah, the libraries and...
And we've talked about before, it would be okay, the question is, in the supporting, which is the blue areas.
Not really that more intense.
Okay, with in the supporting?
Right.
Okay.
I was trying to remember, what is the orange view?
So we're going to get to that, that's the residential.
Okay.
That's the residential in Town Center. So the Central Business District, hotels are permitted by bed and breakfast in the supporting subzone, but bed and breakfast establishments are not. Given the number of homes in the supporting subzoning district, should bed and breakfast establishments be permitted? And then based on the discussion we've had so far, should hotels not be permitted in the supporting?
Did you say hotels are permitted in the central business district?
So as it's currently drafted, hotels are permitted in the supporting subzone, but bed and breakfasts are not.
So in central businesses, right here, hotels in your draft are permitted?
Correct. In the supporting subzone, which is the subzone we're talking about.
And it is permitted now?
I don't think they are.
I think it's clearly just the GC then?
Just the ownership of the GC, which is... So we certainly, so we have two questions before us then. Do we want to take hotels out as a permitted use within the central business district?
Yes.
No. It's always like, keep my options open.
It's ranching.
So no hotels in the central business district either downtown, like, God. Do we want to allow bed and breakfasts? Specifically in the supporting subzone, given the number of homes that are there?
I guess my question is, are there, will we allow short-term rentals?
We are not, we haven't gotten there yet. We haven't added to short-term rentals.
I don't think you can have one without the other.
I agree. I mean, they are definitely different.
Not really.
But, yeah, so. Do you want to defer this conversation till we talk about short-term?
I think it kind of goes hand in hand.
Well, bed and breakfast, usually, the owners live there.
You don't have to.
I've not seen one not, or not be there.
I've stated something that they're not. They live down the street, and then they walk up to the building.
But they're there almost the entire time, because they make the food, they, yeah.
I was taking that in breakfast where they don't make the food, literally.
Well, they're there to serve the food.
I think in terms of use, it's pretty similar.
To a church.
Short-term rental, short-term. And I don't say in order, it's, I'm just saying, I think they're very similar. I think it would be difficult to say you can have a bed and breakfast, but you can't have a short-term rental or vice versa. And I guess the other question I would have is like, in the traditional, the traditional business districts, will we allow short-term rentals there either, are we going to cover this?
We're going to get there.
Okay.
The direction you're leading is no, but there's going to be a question to get there.
I mean, Kevin, has there been ever been a request or, you know, a request to open a bed and breakfast in the CBDs?
I haven't had any bed and breakfast, no.
We don't have to do it, it's just that it came up, I'm asking a question.
Have you ever had any negative feedback from one of the small towns?
No.
I don't think so.
And the context that it came up was that there is an interest within the community to keep these homes as homes. And to give them a viable use, a bed and breakfast might do that.
That's what I was thinking. Those houses are large.
They aren't, most of them are large.
Correct, and they would have the space. And they'd be sure.
We can make it a conditional use, we can, so that it does have some tight-specific elements and it's important to be away.
Would you also have to have a licensing, sort of a licensing ordinance, like you do for the short-term rentals?
Well, it would be an occupational license to it, because...
Might just be an occupational...
Just the occupation, because it's this.
It's not a life, short-term rental, it's occupational. Well, of course, they got to get, you know, all the same things that you would have to have. You would have to have evacuation route notice of...
I would say.
All the same, basically, all the same thing that's in the short-term rental ordinance. Actually, Building Code says a bed and breakfast needs a lot more than just...
Yeah, there's a lot more building to have for a duration.
Right, well, I'm just, that's what I'm saying, so it's not, there would have to be an accompanying municipal ordinance that would cover bed and breakfast.
Well, no, it's in the Building Code.
Well, I mean, in terms of the occupational licensing and the display, and the actual, you would license the bed and breakfast, correct? I would say we would do it similarly to short-term rentals, that's what I'm saying. So I mean, I think, to me, I mean, I don't have an objection to it, and I'm not advocating for it either, but I think that's probably something that council might want to think about, I guess. I want signs too, so that, you know, it's not a loss.
Well, I mean, they can have signs today, because they're in the traditional business district. So that's, the signs are not issued. Do we want to punt until...
I think it's a topic for discussion, but I think we probably have to make more of a meeting. Well, council, there will be some opinions.
If you have your slides there, we can talk.
So we will now spend a few minutes discussing the residential subzoning districts in both portions of the central business district. In downtown or Town Center, there is one residential subzoning district, which you see in orange on the screen. And those are the homes on Miller, Longley, and Autobahn Place. Since I answered your question?
Yes.
There are two residential subzoning districts in Midway. And the orange is Residential 1, and Residential 2 is in red. We discussed accessory dwellings last month. In the Phase 3 draft, integrated accessory dwellings are not listed as an accessory use in any other residential subzoning districts in the central business district or either in the supporting sub-district. If it's okay with the planning commission, given the number of single families in these residential areas, we would add an integrated ADU, so that it would mirror what's in the R1, R1 districts. Are y'all okay with that? In the Phase 3 draft, the multifamily dwellings are classified either as permitted or restricted uses. And the council said, of course, that every district, multifamily dwellings are restricted and are only permitted where a multifamily building exists today. And there's currently one, and that is on Autobahn Place. And that's specifically put in there to make that a conforming use. In the Town Center Supporting, what the current draft says, buildings that existed prior to the enactment of the UDO may be converted to multifamily, in terms, assuming they can comply with the ordinance. But after the enactment of the ordinance, no new ones can be created. We've had, and then in the Midway Core 2 and 3, multifamily buildings are permitted by right. So to remind you where the two, the Midway Core 2 and 3 are, you can see on the map. In blue or aqua is the Core 2 district, and the Cincinnati Bell building is Midway Core 3. So the question in front of you is, do you have any concerns with how the multifamily dwellings are classified in both Town Center and Midway? And again, this has come up in several copies of conversations. So let's start with the Town Center. In the core, you're only permitted if it exists today, so it's for the, to make the one on Autobahn Place conforming. And then in the supporting, the only way you can do it is to convert an existing building, you can't build a new one. So in terms of multifamily buildings in the Town Center, are you okay with how that is classified? And then in Midway, they are just permitted in the two core zones. So the aqua and the grayish, which is where Cincinnati Bell is, meaning if someone tore down the pizza place or whatever, down here on the corner of Southview, they could put in a multifamily building.
And the same with the Cincinnati Bell location?
Correct. So that building could be converted, or there could be something else built on that site, a multifamily.
Because it's not going to be converted.
It's not going to be converted, because it's a switching station or whatever now, but...
And the multifamily there, again, has height restrictions, because is that in part of the...
So the core, so we hear what the height restrictions are for both places.
We left the, we left the VA out of the...
Yes, yeah, so originally, the Town, the Core 3 included the Cincinnati Bell building and the VA. That VA is staying where it currently is today, which is R1C. So the height restrictions in the Core 2, which is the aqua or the blue, is 40 feet.
40 feet, okay.
And in MC3, which is now just the Cincinnati Bell building, it's 50 feet.
It's pretty tall.
Yes, it's just 150 feet.
It is pretty tall for that, there's condos behind there.
I think we left it at 50 feet because the existing buildings 50 feet.
I know, but we're talking about a park.
Well, it would be for any building, right?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it's ready to build. Right. So that's how it's...
But it's not, doesn't have to be multifamily, is what I'm saying. It'd be anything.
The other thing you could do is if we're trying to keep that building conforming in terms of its height, you could make it a restricted use in the core and say the height limit is 40 feet or 35 feet or whatever you wanted. So that would be better to fit. Well, yes, but assuming if it gets sold at some point in the future.
Well, the issue is, and I'm building it tall, I get it, but it's fat. So if someone tore that down and brought it forward, which they can, and make it 50 feet, that is a very odd looking there.
And that particular location would be odd.
It would be. So I think it needs some restrictions on it because of the oddness of it came forward. Too large.
So the rest is 40?
Yeah, the rest is 40. The blue is 40.
Right. So it makes sense just to keep it all the same.
Correct. That's the only thing I'm thinking. Yes, because it's about further, you don't realize it's 50 feet. You don't, it has a lot of length. But if they tore it down, put it right way up to where they're allowed to next to the street, and put parking behind it, it would look too big.
So let's take a step back.
Yes.
You're okay with multifamily in the aqua at 40 feet? Okay. So then there are two issues with the Core three, which is the Cincinnati Bell Building.
Correct.
It is 50 feet because that's the height of the existing building.
Correct.
We can make some decisions to make that building non-conforming and bring the height down in general. We can make, if you're concerned specifically about multifamily, we can make it a restricted use and impose a lower height limit. What is your pleasure?
I'm going to get it at 40 feet and make it non-conforming because like I said, it's still the same building as ex зоне anyway, so it doesn't really affect them directly.
Correct. Okay. All right. So the Core three, we're going to reduce the height for everything to 40 feet. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
And again, they could get a variance.
Well, that, yes, because it's the law. And we can't do anything about that.
So now let's answer the second question. Are you okay with multifamily new construction on the Cincinnati Bell site at 40 feet if the building's torn down?
There's a lot of multifamily on that street.
There's a lot, because you had brackets on the... And now we're back to short-term rentals. So the problem with, not the problem, but why it's a little more complicated than Alex ended the hike in the commercial district is we have all of these subzoning districts. We could make it parallel such that the residential subzoning districts follow what we talked about last night for R1. And then all of the other ones, the cores, the supportings, then it's not, then it's not allowed. That's, that would be parallel to the other decisions that you've made. But clearly, that's the question is how do we deal with it given the breadth of these districts?
But is there a restriction from how you're residential, even in one of the core districts or the supporting, that is a residential bed? Do you want to report requirements above the pub? You could do that, correct?
Okay. So when this one, and Kevin can help me if I'm wrong. When it was put in place in 2021, what it said, the ordinance said was that short-term rentals had to be accessory, but they were permitted in Central Business District housing. And the interpretation of that has been that, for example, if you wanted to have, if you have today a building in Midway, because this is an actual example, there's residential, non-residential on the first floor, there are a couple of dwelling units above to make it accessory, only one of those dwelling units is licensed today to be a short-term rental. So that's how that has been handled, given the complexity of how it was passed in 2021, which is a logical interpretation of that. So, you know, so if you decide that a short-term rental is not going to be permitted in the core, the supporting districts, the one that exists today that is duly licensed will be a non-conforming use and can exist forever. And there's, how many in Midway? One?
There's two. Two, two in the same building. So there's a, the interpretation at the time was that there is a a leasable space on the first floor, or multiple leasable spaces. There's four units upstairs total. And essentially, the interpretation is two of those units is less than half because there's also the commercial space. So it's, it's, I guess, half, exactly half of the residential units, but it's still less than the total units is the way I interpreted it as being, et cetera.
And again, because the ordinance said specifically Central Business District housing when it was passed in 21.
I guess what Mike, and maybe I didn't phrase my question properly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
As you mentioned, and this is a hypothetical, but just above the pub, like in the upper floors of that building, in the, or in the Phoenix building, you know. Do you, if, if the current, and I'm not saying that this would happen, but if the current owner of the building says, well, I'm going to put a couple of apartments upstairs, they could do that, correct?
Oh, yes. Yeah.
And then, to Kevin's point, one of those two could become a unit, a short-term rental unit.
Under the current interpretation of the current standard, yes.
But by doing it now and saying it doesn't apply to the core, would it take that away?
Yes, it would take, they could still put units up there that are...
It could be a short-term rental.
They cannot be a short-term.
But they could be today.
But they, under his interpretation, if it can some way be defined as accessory...
Right.
Then they could.
I mean, I'm kind of okay with Kevin's interpretation, but I don't know how you feel.
I'm fine with his interpretation.
I don't have a problem, but I think we're inconsistent that we're banning it in other places, that this seems like kind of the same area that we're banning it in. Again, I'm not necessarily for that, but I think with where we're banning it otherwise, that, you know, and committing it here for leaving it as accessory use. It seems a little bit inconsistent.
Yeah, I think the reason we're banning it was because in the other places, it was a neighborhood, a lot of single-family homes. This is nothing like that.
Well, we're doing it in the R3 then too, or the, the multifamily.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, I guess the only difference I would see there is if you're living above a commercial building, you know, a commercial space below, you kind of, you're already kind of, you're not in control of who's coming and going all the time anyway. You've got bars and restaurants.
Right, right.
Particularly not a family.
Right. To your point, if I have a family, you know, four family, and then all of a sudden, everybody else is coming and going, I think it's a different context if you have a commercial building than you're, you're a residential upstairs. It kind of comes with the territory, you know, you're getting something to do.
I'm okay with keeping it. I've just, that raises the issue.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is short-term rental accessory in the core and the supportings. And then the next question is in the residential subzoning districts, make it parallel to what you did with the R1?
Yeah.
Okay. Then now we're to the traditional business district. Again, you have these existing mixed-use buildings. How do we want to handle it there? We know the tenants that are on the bottom of those, which are somewhat different than some of the other tenants. What do we want to do for short-term rental in the traditional business districts?
Is it the same now, though? I mean, hypothetically, some...
That's a general commercial.
That's a general commercial district.
So I don't believe that's going to be...
So the problem was that...
I don't think it's allowed.
It was, when it was passed in 2021, short-term rental was allowed as an accessory use in the general commercial district. But the phrase that said, all the things I just said...
Or in the residential use?
It doesn't talk about mixed-use or multifamily. So you have a conflict in the two provisions where it can be an accessory use, but the type of unit, the multifamily units that are currently there are not listed in that longer list of places where you can have it. So you have a conflict between your two, your two regulations.
I mean, I'm just thinking, at least specifically, I'm thinking more like an inverness. Either upon a corner building there, or whether there's like three or four of those apartments, you know, the one on like four or five in that same intersection, I could see, again, you know, one of those units or two of those units, depending on which building it is, being a short-term rental that... As long as it's...
Does, is the, I'm assuming, is the apartment building?
The apartment building, the, is not, if that's in R3, it will stay R3.
That's in R3, okay. That would be my concern, is the bigger building.
Right. Yeah, that one's not, that was R3. It's going to stay R5, but it's going to stay that.
I'm not sure how many units are in, like, two corner buildings. I think one has six and the other one, I don't know how many is in...
But then you have the two buildings further up for Thomas Avenue next to where the hometown relity building is. They have units above, which potentially could be short-term, which would be the exact same example of what we talked about in Midway.
And I'm thinking it would be the same as in the Midway, or same as your interpretation, essentially.
Yes.
Would have to be less, it wouldn't, could be the majority of the units, it would have to be less than.
And it would have to be licensed and...
Right, right. But it's going to be the same.
All right. So...
I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, in my mind, yeah. Because it's not the apartment, I mean, it's just your...
All right. So what I'm hearing is that short-term rental in those mixed-use buildings, whether it's the small ones for the avenue or the ones on La Boy, or you can have short-term rental provided they're accessory, with the interpretation being that accessory means like, because your current standard, the current language says incidental, incidentally subordinate to, so I may have to introduce some...
Yeah. So like, like the, the wayside plot of Hurwick down on Highland. Yeah. I mean, is that, is that considered a building? Is that multiple buildings?
Collison lots.
Collison lots, that, that strip in there.
But that's going to...
Is that traditional?
Yeah, that is going to be the neighborhood commercial office district, so that, so y'all have said, you have prohibited there.
Yeah, that's what I was going to get at, yeah.
So the traditional business district is just...
Just in rooms?
Just in rooms.
It's just in rooms, okay. Because that's what I was thinking in that context.
Okay. So that's what we'll do. Okay. Required design standards for the Central Business District govern corner treatment, mass and scale, facade articulation and design, materiality and color, windows and transparency, building entries, audience, and other miscellaneous requirements. One of those miscellaneous requirements states that if a building is designated as a terminated view on the zoning map, it must have a prominent architectural feature that enhances the character and visibility. There is one parcel in both of the Central Business, actually, it's two parcels, in the Central Business District that has a terminated view, and that is the US Bank Building, because Highland Avenue terminates into it. It is actually technically in the supporting subzone, which is not, or the design standards are not applicable. So I'm asking for your permission that that one, if it is designated as a terminated view, that it may be subject to the required design standards. So it would be that part, that's technically two parcels, but that one development right there. Y'all okay with that?
Yes. Is the terminated view designated now anywhere or is it...
It is not. That's new. Yeah, yeah.
So that's the only one?
And that is the only one. It entails in orbit, right, because there's no place else. A terminated view is defined, it's when a road deadens into a building.
So the one, so the building's opposite of a rural road when you come up into the Town Center, now that doesn't count there?
Correct. The only one that we're, that we talked about designated is this one.
Seems like that would be...
Which one?
Right. When you come up where the kaleidoscope is, when you come out of a rural road, you stop right there at the intersection, you're looking right across the outside of... We're on Highland Avenue?
Right. It's the same context, in which case I think, yes, you're right. That one's part of the core.
It is part of...
Again, it's, that would be part of the core, so that one...
So you're talking about just in terms of this situation?
This situation here.
But it is a terminated view.
It is a terminated view, and it's not applicable to the design standards. And I did not want that to, I wanted to ask y'all if it would be okay to make this, to put a case in terminated view. So we had originally, as I said a few minutes ago, originally when we developed the subzoning districts within the Midway, the VA hospital was a part of the MC3 core. And at that point in time, the MC3 core was not subjected to the required design standards. So my question to you is now that the VA hospital has been moved, do you want to make the Cincinnati Bell site have to comply with the design standards? And that's completely, you know, it's very much a policy choice. The idea behind the required design standards is for the area that has really initially been thought of as your core area is where they apply. But if something did happen to the Cincinnati Bell Building and it was brought further forward, would you want it to be subjected to the required design standards?
Yes, I think it would be nice. You have those large houses to the right of it that should fit in with them.
Well, given the proximity right across the yard.
And across the yard, yeah. Historically.
Well, and because, and we haven't told them this, but we will. They are not currently in the historic district, but by changing their zoning to Central Business District Midway, because of the way the historic district functions, we are now putting them in the overlay. So they will get their notice that says two things, that they are being a part of the overlay, historic overlay, and that they are a part of the Central Business District as well.
Is that, is not in the National Historic District, the Bell building?
It is not. It is not.
I think it probably is eligible.
It's a wonderful art deco building.
Well, it's in every AP building, which there are several others in the same building by the same area, but have the, have the list to name it.
So it will be, so it will be both in the historic overlay and then subjected to the design standards. And that is the only site within the city, as we go through this process, that is getting the overlay applied to it that doesn't currently have it. So 28 Midway Court, and the owner of that property is here, and she also sent a letter. And so as we have been talking about creating these subzoning districts, it was potentially that her property, which is the property at the very end of Midway Court, would be rezoned back to Central Business District. It was rezoned from Central Business District in 2012 to R1A. Because it was rezoned to R1A, the way the local historic district is functioning today, this parcel is now not in the Central Business Local Historic District because it is zoned R1A. And so she has requested that it would be, that it retain its R1A zoning as we move through this update.
Can we just make it some kind of subdivision a couple of years ago, isn't it?
So what happened was, as I understand it, the, the part that, these out the back was a landlocked parcel. And so it had no road frontage. So at the time that that happened in 2012, you combined both that back portion and the portion that has frontage on Midway Court and rezoned it from CBD to R1A at that time.
Both, the whole lot?
Yeah, the whole, the whole lot. The two, the two lots were joined, and both lots were, and I don't know what the back portion was, but at that point in time, the front portion definitely was in the Central Historic District. But when you joined them, it was always zoned to R1A at that time.
But I was just trying to remember a recent discussion about this situation that we, we settled that we were going to keep it in the town, or in the Midway Historic District, the Midway Half-Center District, but we were going to give the allowance to be the subzoning residential heart, right?
Yes. So that's essentially where we landed when we talked with the, with the Town Council. That it would be a residential subzoning district, that we would make those homes permitted by rate, and that we would have some... and that we would have some development standards that made them somewhat more conforming. We're not going to get all of them conforming, because some of them are sitting on lot lines. But yes, so we are, the goal behind that particular subzoning district is to bring them in line with that, for those objectives. But my matter was the property owner, but she does, she has sent a letter asking that it be retained, that the R1A zoning be retained.
Do you might ask me a couple, answering a couple of questions?
No.
Do you want to, I guess, do you understand what we're saying as far as the keeping it residential, but it would be part of the bigger district?
Part of the CBD?
Yes, but it would be, but it would be, so the little, the orange area there on Midway Court would be retained as a residential, what we call subzone. So it would still allow, by right, your property would be conforming, it wouldn't change anything.
But what it would do is bring her back into the local Historic District.
Correct.
It would.
Yes. Which I don't, I don't think it needs to be.
I guess, do you have an objection, or I guess a rationale why you think that?
I personally think there's many parts of the Historic District, that there's been so much stringency put upon them, that they actually, they don't look very nice anymore. So when I purchased that from the Windburn family, they had gone to extreme lengths to do that, and it's one of the reasons why I did go ahead with the purchase, that it was within the, that it was a residential and not commercial historic.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying, so it would still be residential, it wouldn't be commercial.
Correct.
Correct.
Well, we are allowing small, small-scale commercial within that subzone, things like artist studios and those kinds of things. And that was a deliberate decision and order to, since they have right now the Central Business District, and they are allowing some fairly intense non-residential uses, to allow some non-residential uses that are less intense, given the nature of the court.
Now, would that limit developments too, in that because of the zone change? For her and myself who's next door to her?
Oh, she's not. I'm not sure, I'm sorry, Mr. Cruz, I don't understand your question.
I'm just saying, being historical, is that going to limit potential, what we could do, maybe want to do in the future to that property? Because right now, it's getting obsolete, the way the street is very narrow, you can't really get in and out of it, you know, and to making that historical.
It's already historic, and it has been since, you know, 2012 or thereabouts. So hers would be a different situation, because she's not currently in the local Historic District. But your property is, and has been for a number of years.
Okay.
So that's actually not changing as a part of the update.
But I guess, what is a permitted use of the subzone now?
Right now, anything that is permitted within the Central Business District is permitted within, in those homes, but the homes themselves are non-conforming, as is Mr. Cruz's duplex.
Except for, we would make this.
But now, we are making the use conforming with the subzone.
So essentially, you could put anything there?
Oh, we could.
That would fit on the lot.
That would fit on the lot, and it's small scale, it's things like artist studio, craftsman workshop kinds of uses, or what is permitted currently in the draft of Phase 3.
In this sub.
In that subzone. So it is less intense in terms of its non-residential than, say, for example, the purple and the blue.
But I think too, being historical, girl, what she's saying, she's afraid, I mean, she wanted to maybe do something. I said, being historical, it's hard to do something with your property, to say if you wanted to tear it down and build something there, because, so I was told that if it burned down, you couldn't rebuild it, because it's a non-conforming, is that correct?
So right now, you're a non-conforming use, the whole part of all of this update would make you conforming.
Yeah, we're trying to address that problem.
Trying to get to there.
Oh, okay, so it's, it would burn down?
If you burnt down, you know.
You could build a new house.
You could build back a duplex.
Okay, okay, that's what we're confused with, you know, with that, thank you.
So that's part of the goal of this, is to try to deal with somebody's non-conforming situations.
Okay.
But she is not in the Historic District, and she is a conforming use, because she's R1A, and has been since 2012.
Alyssa, why don't we guarantee that you are not touching any R1 zones? At every meeting that I've ever gone to.
We are, we have talked about that, for the R1 residential neighborhoods, yes, that they are staying the same, but she is in unusual.
She's a single lot.
She's an R1A.
Yeah, she's an R1A, but she's in an unusual situation.
I don't know why, why won't we stop saying she? She's asking, she's asking to stay R1A.
Correct, but typically, we don't like to just zone a lot, as a single zone.
You're changing R1A, is the guarantee with no R1A?
All we're talking about is this one lot.
I understand.
Yeah, this one lot.
But it's done. She's asking that it stays on.
And it certainly can, and that, she has, you know, came to the meeting last month, she came to the coffee and conversation, she sent a letter, so we're having these discussions now.
I just don't know how it benefits it to move it.
I think the only thing is, really, is just you have a single property that would be its own zone. That's the only, that's what my real objective, I, or objective, I have two, is just, we typically don't want to zone a single property as a separate zone.
But it was done in 2012.
It was.
Yeah, I understand.
And was it this board that did that? I mean, the lady's own question?
Oh, City, they made a recommendation, and City Council did this.
Alyssa, and I think I've got my ideas, but for this lady's edification, what would be the pluses and minuses for her to each side, in your opinion?
So if she stays R1A, she is not in the Historic District, but she cannot have any non-residential uses. If she becomes a part of the Central Business District residential subzone, she becomes a historic property, and she could have some non-residential uses. And we talked about that, you know, the coffee's a conversation, in terms of what those plus and minuses are.
So a real minus for her would just be that she would be stuck with residential only, and she would not be, wouldn't have the flexibility.
Correct, she would lack the flexibility of not being able to have those non-residential uses, but she would be out of the Historic District, which is what she is today.
Yeah.
I know it's generally bad zoning to have a single lot being a certain zone, but I think we got bigger fish to fry at this point in time. If that's what she wants, then, you know, I don't see why.
I think it could be easily at some point, if the next, you know, if I sell it and the next person wants it to be, it sounds like it would be something that could be looked at.
Yeah, she could request the next, the next buyer could request his own change.
Mark, if they wanted to.
You know, that's a 900 square foot home. I think today, if that was resold, somebody would want to probably make some changes to accommodate a family. It's a very, very tiny house, as it stands right now.
So keep it R1A?
Yep.
She might.
It's not worth it to change it.
So moving into community comments that we heard at the coffee and conversation last month, we heard that people would like, so right, everybody talked about what the maximum height is for the subzone, that there are no story limits, and so people have asked that there be not only a maximum height, but there be a story limit as well. Specifically, in the court, the Town Center Core is 40 feet, which more than likely would only be two stories, given the height of commercial these days, but there is no guarantee of that. So the request is that it would be 40 feet and two stories. The next move would be, so we also have a maximum building width for the Town Center Core, and it is 185 feet, and that is essentially what one hire is. And there's been a request that that be decreased. We have already decreased the height, so the building as it stands today would be a non-conforming structure, because it's 50 feet, and the draft has it at 40 feet. And then the final thing that we heard, on this slide, there are other things, is to permit single-family detached dwellings by right in the supporting subzone, as opposed to restricted, because right now, in the draft, they're restricted use, and restriction is, they have to exist the day the ordinance is passed. If you make it permitted by right, that would mean, you know, if someone wanted to tear one of these down, they could put another one back up. So that's the distinction. So those are the three, we have other ones, but these are the three that are on this slide. And so what is your pleasures as we talk about these things?
So we were talking about the height, and we were talking about 40 feet, it went back and forth to 35, 50, 40, and that's why we, that's why it was decided at 40. All the, where the, trying to think, subway and that side, they're only two stories high. Except for. It's really, it's two stories high, 40 feet, there's only two floors. Only has two sets of windows.
Correct, but if you look at the building in the Midway, that sits on the corner, it is three stories and 40 feet.
Which one on the corner, right on that?
Where the tower is. The thing that's loaded.
At the bottom.
Under the bottom, yeah, so those, but again, that was done at a period of time where the first floor was much lower than it would be today.
Correct.
So the question is, the request was that it be 40 feet and two stories.
I would be for two stories. That's my. We just went through this over at the other end, remember?
Well, I mean, you could have two 20-foot stories, I mean, you could have.
And 40 feet, maximum.
You could, I mean, that would say.
Correct, so what she's saying, she wants it to be, she's fine, I think, what I'm hearing.
40 feet.
40 feet is fine.
As long as it's two stories.
As long as it's no more than two stories.
Correct, that is what you hear.
So what does the rest of the court feel like?
I'm against limiting the stories, so with the height, I mean, it seems like the goal that everybody has is, we're not going to build another one hire. I mean, so, you know, if we split the, you know, minimize the width and drop the height to 40 feet, I mean, that prevents another one hire.
My question is, what are you putting on the two floors above the first floor? Because the first floor, I'm assuming, is going to be commercial, correct?
Yes.
Has to be.
It has to be.
So what's on the second floors?
It can be that much more commercial, we don't even have the commercial though now. As it's currently drafted, it can be commercial off to non-residential.
Correct.
It could be any of those things, although the first floor.
I know, so creating more apartments, correct?
It could potentially be more apartments too.
With less spaces to park.
Correct.
There's no place to park now.
They would have to do underground parking or something, which would.
It would have to, you know, because if one hire never gets full, where are those people going to park?
They will all send their.
Two cars, what happens if three through?
Well, most of the units there have three cars.
Really?
And they're 20.
That's not.
So when they did a traffic impact city for one, there was more than enough parking.
I get it, but I'm telling you, people that have condos, a lot of them have three cars.
A lot of the people that are going to be in there are going to be people that are more comfortable too.
They're not going to have, a daughter live with them, or a son live with them.
We couldn't hear your comment.
I just got one question, I'm sorry to interrupt, and I'm not trying to step on anybody's toes. I don't know how close we're getting to the end, I think there are a few folks that have to leave, or hoping they might be able to make contact.
Yeah, I guess you want to take a break real quick.
Sure, let's take a break, yeah, I mean, there's, we are, the rest of the slides are dealing with the conversations we heard at the coffee and conversation. But if the gentleman needs to leave, Mr. Kaufman needs to leave.
I'm conducting business right here. Going both, but I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, his son's in the hospital, why can't he get up? That's a big deal, Paul, with you and Tom.
I mean, is this a time of more comments?
We have two more slides before we get to that.
Okay, we've got two more slides. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, we, but there are lots of stuff on this slide.
Well, I'll make mine quick.
This is a lot.
When you make these decisions, can we talk, please, before you make the decisions, from the community, the local community, when you make these decisions?
Back up to the chair.
I'll make my other comment quick. My parents purchased 1100 South Fort Thomas Avenue in 1976. In 1977, they were awarded, awarded from the state of Fort Thomas for beautification, because it was a drugstore, with lead-based paint, murals painted all inside, said Parks and Recreation. So we cleaned it up. In that time that we've been in that building, a lot of things have changed in the Midway District, and I support the local businesses that have came in there, but there becomes one major problem. And I don't know the facts, Mr. Barbie can recite them on the show. When a business goes in, they are required to have so many parking spots, per square footage, or per chairs, or per table, or there's some kind of calculation that goes in that each business is to have a parking, so these parking spots. It's my understanding, I could be wrong, if I am correct, be pleased. But with that being said, everybody that goes in counts the same spots. So when they come in, they say, I got two spots in front of my building, and I got the city parking lot that's where across from the pub, and I got those spots, you know, I'm using it. The next guy comes in, hey, I got the city spots, and I got a spot in front of my building. They're counting the same spots over and over, so the parking has become atrocious, absolutely atrocious, to the point of businesses are using other businesses' lots for their own parking. And the other part of the parking situation is, with some of the businesses that are there have delivery trucks. When the Midway Streetscape Project went in, it was voted on to put the bricks in between the two north and southbound lanes for the trucks to park on the bricks and load and unload. With a couple of the businesses there, those trucks come in in the middle of the afternoon, and they go out there, ramp out the back, get their dolly out, drop off the goods, and people coming up River Road can't make that left-hand bend. I'm waiting for the day that we need to see an emergency vehicle go by one direction, and one of those big trucks unloading, and traffic backed up heading on the northbound. I think it's going to be a catastrophe. There's already been two children that have been hit at that intersection on bikes, one by bike and one walking, that was leaving school with windmill. I know, I was there with the ambulance. Something has to be done. My mother always said, if you're going to complain, offer a suggestion, don't be just a complainer. I'm not complaining, but that's just an analogy that I'll make. My suggestion would be that in the parking ordinances, that the time of deliveries may be restricted before the opening of the businesses. I know a couple of the businesses, that the delivery drivers have keys to those businesses to make those deliveries. And that would eliminate the parking of these large trucks in the middle of the street when you're trying to make a left or right-hand turn, and you can't see, and you wind up driving 30 or 40 feet against the grain of traffic, and then stopping, flashing your lights, and looking out your side mirror, making sure no one's coming over the other side, so you continue the head in the direction that you want it to go. So it's always been discussed with the Midway Streetscape Project, a couple other projects, and I would just like to bring it up, that whatever you can do to help with the parking situation would be greatly appreciated. And I don't think I'm the only person in the Midway Business District that has a business that has that opinion.
That was my quick comment. You kept it under five minutes? Good job.
All right, Paul. All right, this is time for the handout. I just want to point out that in 2000, it was actually, I believe, 2002, when the Central Business District, I'm talking about what Elisa refers to as the Town Center, was made a local protected historic district. And that wasn't done to be a pain in the butt for anybody that ever came forward in the future to try to do development, but what it was meant to do was to preserve what we have. And it seems to me that a couple of you at least are not for restricting things, but that's what zoning is. I live on Shaw Lane, and my friend Jean Farley lives down the street, and she has five lots. I think probably the highest and best use of her property is to put high rises all along there with use of the higher river, but we don't do that because that's not what we're trying to preserve on Shaw Lane. So what are we trying to preserve up here? Elisa has taught me many things in these last two and a half years, but one of them was sense of place. And sense of place is what you're used to, what your home is, what you want to have your home look like in the future. And one of those ways that she recommended that we do that, and it's in the comprehensive plan, is by the scaling and massing of buildings. Add to this that we also have historic guidelines here, and the basis of those is that whatever is torn down, not that nothing can ever be torn down, because things are going to have to be torn down, they may burn down, that when that happens, what is replaced has to be a similar height, a similar scale, a similar setback. What I passed out here today are some of the standards that are in the Central Business District, actually in the Midway also, that some of those were of concern to me, because I walked outside, and looked, what do we actually have here right now? What is our sense of place? And I think Pam hit the nail on the head when she said, these, no, Elisa's right, there are a few that are not two-story buildings, but the vast majority of these buildings are two-story buildings. On the west side of the street, in draft three, and this is on the very first page, the maximum building width is 185 feet, which Elisa confirmed tonight is the width of one Highland. Why is that a problem? Well, the reason that's a problem is because it's not what we have there right now. All but three buildings on the west side, they look like they're connected, but they're not. There's spaces in between all the three buildings here. That's what we have in my historic design review guidelines. That is what needs to go back. Not a line full of edifices going down that side of the street. So I would ask you, when you're looking at this 185-foot width for this side of the building, to realize that as soon as you approve that, if in fact you do approve that, that right away sets up a direct conflict with the design review guidelines. When something goes down, and something goes back up, that guarantees a fight, because it's going to, someone's going to say, well, I can have 185 feet, and someone else is going to say, it's not the same scale, not the same height, not the same setback. So I would urge you in the Central Business District here to adopt design guidelines that comport with the historic nature we have here. And again, we're not talking about national historic designation, which is nothing more than an honor. We talked about that before, it's an honor. The local district protects. So we're talking about this is a local protected district. So I ask when you do your analysis on two stories, for example, that's what we have here, except for a building or two, I would ask that you do have the two-story limitation on 40 feet. One day last year, right around this time, there was a whole group of people in the coffee and conversation, and the question came up to Elisa, can you look in your zoning toolbox? And if we want to keep the CBD the same, what do we do? Elisa looked outside, and she said, these buildings are 35 feet, and they're two stories. So she said, if you want to keep the same flavor, the same, we've heard character and charm, I hear it every day, people come and talk to me every day, that they want to keep the same character and charm, let's look at what we have, and that's what we have with that. And going down to the bottom of this, I wanted to ask about, when you had the joint meeting with city council last year, in June or July, whatever month that was, you talked about having these stepped-back buildings. And we do have them right on the side, the west side of the, I'm sorry, the east side of the street here, with the five and 10 ones, I believe, a step back. There's several of them. But if you look in the unified ordinance, Elisa's diagram of what that looks like. So, right here, we have a one-story building, and then we have way far back, and we have a step up. We're talking about already being 40 feet. So at least the diagram and the ordinance looks high. And before you proceed with doing the step-back buildings, I ask you to do two considerations. First of all, again, unless it's one of those buildings, it's going to be non-conformant to the design review guidelines. And then number two, it will look different than what we're used to, or you know what we have now. Number three, in the comprehensive plan, in the guidelines that you guys adopted, you talk about keeping the city in the park atmosphere, keeping it open, keeping it nicer in the CBD. So that's what I have from page one. On page two, again, now this is the part where Elisa's talking about the supporting district. One of the things that we were concerned about is two here, and one of them is multiple buildings being permitted on these parcels. And so I would like for you guys to be thoughtful about that in your analysis, what that would mean for several things, including bringing density down here. Number two, Elisa decreased the front step-back from the sidewalk from 20 feet, I'm sorry, 25 feet to 20 feet. I would ask you that you retain that 25 feet. If you go out again and take a look around, all but just a few houses across the street have more gender setbacks than 25 feet. So if you want to maintain that look again, you need to at least have a 25-foot step-back. And then again, there's, these step-back buildings are allowed. Down midway, in the entire midway, in draft three, buildings can be 185 feet long. So that's just a decision for you all to have, you know, I don't have a dog in my house, but, but right now, it's not what we have in Midway. We only have 185-foot buildings, again, like Elisa confirmed the size of one Highland. So those were the things that I wanted to ask you about, with just one more, and this is, this has to do with what Elisa talked to us about at this month's meeting. We asked what she thought the most significant change was in giving people the ability, giving unelected officials, or even appointed officials, ability to do modifications. In draft three, the zoning administrator, on their own, has the ability to grant a 10% pay waiver. And that again is not going in front of the Board of Adjustment, it's not coming in front of you all, that could just buy, that's what it's going to be in the zoning code. I would ask you not to do that, because we're already at 40 feet here, or a step-back of 50 feet, we're talking about going to 44 feet, or 55 feet. I do believe that just for, you know, just for good city government, anyone that would want that kind of variance would either take advantage of the KRS, Avenue, which is Board of Adjustment, or at least come before you all, so you can do an analysis on that, considering. So I thank you for your attention tonight, but I just want to bring those comments to your attention before Elisa discusses these next considerations. Hi, Paul.
Yeah, I'll run it real quick. Hi, Paul Cruzy here. I am in 15 Midway Court. I guess the concerns I have too is, I hear a lot, you want to raise here, and, so, but being a bedroom community, bedroom community, that's wonderful, you know, but it gets to a point where everybody cannot afford to come in and buy a house here and live here. Please keep your minds open, I own apartment buildings, and just for that fact, people, if they do want to live in Fort Thomas, yeah, but, you know, they, everybody cannot afford to buy, maybe at this time. So, always keep that in your mind when you're making these decisions, so other people can to live in this wonderful city too. And again, keep your minds open, that sometimes certain areas, they do come obsolete when it comes to their situation at the time, and it's kind of tough when you put so much limits on what could be, you know, out of the road. So I just want to tell you, thank you very much for your time.
This will be my quick answer. This wasn't my comment, it was our district's. My understanding is that in Fort Thomas, we get 33% apartments already, which is a higher percentage than any of those surrounding areas. So as far as getting a bunch more apartments, I'm not certain that that's of all concern at this point. My other question, and Elisa, I just need clarification, is when this discussion goes back and forth, and I don't know what was the final decision, are the short-term rentals going to be available at Inverness on the corner of Roboy?
Yes, so, but only as an accessory. So for example, the building that has the, or used to have the barber shop in it, you would not be able to take those two floors and convert them all to short-term rentals. It would have to be accessories, so needing that, at least less than 50% of the space in that building could be short-term rentals.
Okay, so that, thank you for that answer. The other part is, was, I think the building is called the Highlander Building? The five-story that's kind of behind that corner?
Yes, the, and forgive me for what I'm about to say, I believe you referred to it in our last meeting as where the old people go before they go to the home?
It's called, my brother calls it, the home before the home. It's your home before the home. And I'm saying another funny thing, he ubers all the time. He can't get an Uber since he moved there, because they don't know where it is, and he's, like, doesn't, I don't know what the address is. But he said, when he moved in, he was told by other residents, the only two people who can find where it is, if you call and say you need help, one is 911, and the other is Dolly. They all know, they all know this building, because it is, I mean, my brother's younger than me, and we've got friends who live there that are younger than my brother. But anyway, so that could be short-term rentals?
No, that is currently zoned either R3 or R5. I don't remember off the top of my head, I was at the multifamily district, and the planning commission last night said no to short-term rentals in the multifamily district.
Okay, I just, it's, you talk about a single R1 at the bottom of that street, that's right, that's five, I think it's five stories, I don't know.
It is, I believe it is.
It's unique, so I didn't know if it was addressed in that, and I appreciate your clarification.
No problem.
So we have some, oh, okay. I'm just going to be super quick.
Because this will close public comment though.
For the whole night?
We're almost done.
Well, she said she had a lot to do with two...
Yeah, so I actually...
I want to have an opportunity to make your points before they...
Well, we don't know what she's talking about. You can't really say that.
I can't.
Why?
Because you're really not even permitted, this isn't even a public meeting of KRS, we're not making decisions. Just, let's go ahead with your public comment, and then we're going to, if anybody else wants to start breaking, then we're going to close the topic.
Well, mine was going to be quick. I'm just going to say, and I, no disrespect to you, Mr. Cruzy, but the one thing I would say, does anybody know how many houses are for sale in Fort Thomas right now? Probably less than five. And that's because you can put a for-sale sign out on your house today, and not even go through a Realtor, and you'll get, it'll be for sale, it'll be gone in a couple days. I mean, I would suggest getting a Realtor, but I'm just saying, it'll be gone in a couple days. So I don't think we have to worry. People want to come here because of what we are right now, and I know we keep saying we're going to be obsolete, we're not going to be obsolete. We are a gem, and I think if we keep trying to be like everybody else, like Newport, like Highland Heights, like these other cities, we're going to, we're just going to be like everybody else, and then the gem that was once here is going to be gone forever. I just ask you guys to think about that. And I would also say, I would like to have the same type of height restrictions also. I know you said 40, did you say 40 and two stories? I'd like to see that over in our area as well, on Alexandria Pike. And that, we did talk about, Lisa, when I was at the, I don't remember which one it was that I was at, but one of those, we did talk about that very thing in terms of, if we want to reduce the density, that we would have it be like 35, 40 in two stories.
I believe our discussion was, we did limit it to 40 feet.
Well, we talked about the two stories also.
Well, we just left it flexible, but we left it at 40 feet.
And I did say, I did say I appreciated that before, I'm just saying...
And it is less dense than would be today.
Yes, thank you.
So we are reducing the density, not increasing.
Thank you. Oh, and one last thing, I would just also, I mentioned this to you also at coffee and conversations, if anything does go in, we need some, and this may be another discussion, we need significant barriers between residential and non-residential zones. Even today, the way it sits, we've got lights from parking lots blaring into our backyards, we've got the noise, and we've also got the garbage situation. So there's just things that I think need to be made a little, I mean, that I do really feel like the developers who are coming in, that we should put a little bit more barriers. If they tear it down and make something else, there should be more green space between the residential and the commercial. That would be my request as well. Thank you.
Paul, can you just want me to submit my stuff, or what? Because I might want to talk.
Speak, yeah, right now. No, what I'm saying is, after everybody's done this round, everyone moving on.
Because that's what we thought would change now.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Because I'm here with some suggestions, and I will, and I will email them to everyone as well, but my biggest concern about these meetings right now is, I strongly believe that specifying the zone districts to be discussed in the meeting agenda would significantly improve its effectiveness. Clearly outlining the areas of towns to be addressed would be better for the community, inform the community, encourage participation. The increased clarity would result in a higher turnout and more valuable feedback from residents, which is important for the guidance you need as commissioners in these decisions regarding the proposed zone changes. I have attached both agendas, which I'll just show you, because I'm going to email it to you. This one was for last night, there was nothing under this what was going to be discussed. So you have people sitting here that their district wasn't even discussed, but they just sat through the whole meeting, because they had no idea what was going to be discussed. So if you could put more substance, like break this up in two, so we know what we were going to be talking about, we wouldn't have to sit through all this, praying that a dark little area is going to be brought up. So, let me get down here. You'll notice that, and I can also, I wanted to bring up, allowing community input before the planning commission is asked to decide on decisions on the proposal or not during the meeting. I mean, it just sounds kind of, it doesn't, you're not getting our input when she's asking you what you guys think, when you have all these wonderful people who live in this area and could give you some wonderful suggestions. I mean, I think that would be quite helpful for the whole town. So, and I also think, I, I'll just submit my other stuff, but I really think if you really give us better information before these meetings, and then you could just segment it to just a couple districts at a time, so we're not overwhelmed and sitting through other districts that we can't even wrap our heads around, and we have a question about our certain district, I think it'd be more engaging that way, if you segment it that way. I mean, I've sent these suggestions in over and over, to break this down so it's more understandable, digestible, and you get the correct feedback you need to make these changes to the zone if they need to be. And so I have sent these suggestions, made them with Elisa, and I will, I will email everybody my suggestions as well, because they seem to be getting lost, because this isn't getting any better. So, thank you for letting me talk. That's enough, thanks.
I do have one thing to say. I do live on Miller, in Park Village there. That new, can't find that open? When that, when they're full on Fridays and Saturdays, that lot is full. They park on Miller. They park backwards on Miller. I have pictures showing how they park it. It's terrible. I called the police so many times. They come up the wrong way, wrong way. I always crash into them. It is, parking is an issue up here. It's a big issue. So to do the three stories, I'm really concerned with that, because I live up here, and I see what's happening right now.
So we are at 9:30, and we have the meeting on the 17th, and we could perhaps, do we want to finish this discussion now, or do we want to delay it to the 17th?
Do you all want to do, I'm up for either way.
What I would suggest is letting the review members know what other, what these topics are going to be for the 17th. for the 17th. But it's y'all's discretion, I'm not going to stand here and talk like it's all my fault, but it is...
I think we could take one more next morning.
Okay, so what, what's...
Good idea, please go ahead.
We've already talked about what these are. The next one is the intent statement for the Midway Business District, and removing what you see and highlighted, which is the curricular mass. The next is the regulation that Peggy was referring to, that allows increased height if the building is stepped back. And then the final line is the appropriateness of intent statements in the video, and then removing all references. So we just have that. So, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, we will have the final meeting during Phase Three on April 17th, and there will not be any Coffee and Conversation sessions on the 18th. Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Elisa?
Yes, now, I'm sorry. Elisa, sorry.
Move a motion to the second to adjourn, so we'll go ahead and do that.
Sorry. Can we have a, is there, can we get a copy of that? It's, I sent it today, so I asked who would...
It might not have gotten up there today, but we can get it up there.
Yesterday, it's about the end today, when I was...
I'm sorry?
I think the one from yesterday is about the end, but...
I'll have Sam through it tomorrow.
Pardon me?
I'll have Sam through it tomorrow.
Okay, I mean, I checked it today, but I think it's about the end.